Welcome to the October 25th special meeting of the Calaveras County Planning Commission. And we will get started with the Pledge of Allegiance. Are there any staff announcements or agenda changes today?
None, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. And no consent agenda items or regular agenda items, so we will go ahead and get right into our informational item. And is Martha with us today?
She's okay.
Okay.
Do we have a swearing?
They already did it. Yes. So, welcome to our new Planning Commissioner. Do you want to introduce yourself briefly?
Sure, my name is Hector Lozano. My name is Hector Lozano. I live in Copperopolis, California. I've been a resident in Copperopolis for 20-plus years, was employed and had a career with California Department of Directions, most of the time, 25 years of which were in Savi and Jamestown. I'm married, I have five kids, all of whom have flown the coop, and of course, love being a grandfather. And I've served in various boards and capacities and from the Regents of the University of California as a student to the housing authority in Stanfoss County, and have always had a commitment, at least as my father would put it, to serve others whenever he can. So this is just kind of continuing in that spirit. So I'm happy to serve and look forward to working with everyone.
Great, we are so happy to have you here. Okay, where would we like to pick up?
Yeah, so just real quick, just a few housekeeping things. We had kind of a short discussion on special plans. And I don't know, my brain just wasn't thinking. It wasn't until I got back in the office that I went, oh, yeah. The special plan that we have on record actually is the Rancho Calaveras Special Plan. It is much like a community plan, and prior to the adoption of the 2019 general plan update, they were their own separate published booklets, and they were part of the general plan. So with the adoption of the 2019 general plan update, the Rancho Calaveras Special Plan, as well as all the other community plans that we had, have all been rescinded. So now what you find is references to policy and implementation measures and vision, so to speak, rolled into the community plan element of the general plan. So we do retain those documents in our department for historical research, but at this point, they are rescinded, and there is no need to make any reference to this special plan in the zoning code as it is part of the general plan. So just wanted to clarify that. Animal keeping, I know that I had some homework to do. I reached out to our ag commissioner, our county animal services, in addition to the livestock advisor for the Calaveras County Farm Advisors Office. They're all kind of collaborating and working on reviewing our animal keeping regulation, and they're trying to provide me with some sense of whether or not we are out of touch, so to speak. So we're waiting for their input. Through our rereading of animal keeping and animal production, Martha and I realized that we've really kind of missed our target. So we had, how it got written was not really how we intended for it to be, and so we're going to go back and we're revisiting that, because it looks as though we have inadvertently disallowed livestock operations as a commercial activity in the two prime ag zones, A1 and AP. So we, yeah, we just kind of goofed up.
Thanks, Zach.
So just a few minor details, right? Calaveras County with cattle being our number one, you know, agricultural operation. So little minor changes. We're going to go back, we're going to look at it again, we're waiting for that feedback. So if we can just not worry about that and just continue on until we're able to bring something back to you as far as revision. So I believe we left off on page 64, Community Gardens. Oh, and I provided you with a copy of the definition for food and agriculture that was in that, or I should say, the definition of farm that's in that Food and Agriculture Code, Section 52262, that was referenced under the home stay, and Dune Ranch, referenced 1712050 on page 61. I believe Tim had asked for that.
Do you have another copy of that?
Oh, did I?
I don't see it here.
I might have, yeah, I put it under the wrong seat. Here.
Maybe I didn't have my title somewhere. Thank you.
I get next to you.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Wait, I'm more than enough now.
Yeah.
Okay. Community gardens.
One thought I have is that in the definition on page 97, you know, for our new Commissioner, I mentioned, there's a whole set of definitions that are back toward the back, starting with section, chapter 17.13, that starts on page 95.
The use classifications.
Yeah, yes, right, but they...
Use classifications, AKA definition.
Yeah. So, and then it's broken up into the various sectors of the uses. But I think that the use classification for community garden, we probably ought to have something at the end, since it particularly includes herbs, and cannabis is usually considered an herb, that we probably ought to have something in there that says that, for purposes of this, I guess, really be better to say...
Cannabis, right.
Well, I was thinking of that, but then I started thinking about mushrooms and this sort of thing. Maybe we ought to have a more general statement that, that community gardens shall not include growing any controlled substance or whatever...
Yeah.
...art, term of art we want to use. And Tom in Fasino, are you on board? Guess not. I know when we were discussing community gardens before, why Tom had some concerns, I don't remember what they were.
He's online.
He is?
I see his hand raised.
Tom in Fasino?
Okay, am I unmuted now?
We're hearing you.
Okay, great.
When we were discussing community gardens a while back, you had some specific concern, and all I did was note down Tom's concern, but I didn't know what it was.
On page six, top of page 65, item three. In residential zones, composting is limited to the materials generated on-site and shall be used on-site. I was trying to understand what staff is worried about here, because I'm, and I'm hoping we can find another way of attacking the problem. Does anybody know what they're trying to get at here?
I don't think they want him running a commercial operation in a residential area.
Right.
But I think it could be, the wording probably could make that more clear.
Yeah. So we don't want it to be a site where everyone in the community is bringing their, you know, their yard waste for composting.
One thing, if your neighbor brings you their kitchen scraps.
Maybe we just eliminate the "and shall be used on-site," because I mean...
Well, here's the issue. As someone who's been composting since he was eight years old, I have some information about the subject. First of all, you do want a compost heap to work effectively and efficiently, and to, you don't want odors. To do that, you want the proper carbon to nitrogen ratio. A community garden is probably going to provide, you know, stems and leaves and that sort of thing for the compost. It may not have a sufficient nitrogen ratio that you might get from, pardon me, say, grass clippings or manure. So lots of composters, home composters, community gardens, they bring in, you know, manure from off-site to make their compost heap work well. The second thing is, you also want a product from your compost heap that's just not gardening soil, but also has the proper nitrogen, potassium, and phosphorus levels, so that you have sort of a very fertile garden soil at the end of the process. To get that, often people bring in other sources of potassium and phosphorus. They bring in ashes, they bring in banana peels, stuffs like that. So I'm hoping we can put something in here that allows people to bring in materials from outside, but like prevents that situation you're trying to talk about where it's just one giant compost heap that's commercially operated.
And by definition, a community garden is a joint effort by several households or neighborhoods, so all the materials are not going to be generated on the side of the community garden. I would think that people could bring their household kitchen waste.
Be regulated by volume.
Yeah, or it just seems like that's not necessarily going to be a huge problem, that there'd be a better way to...
Okay. We can come back with some new language if that's the consensus of the commission.
And I think it might tie it to the management provision there under A, the manager would be responsible for maintaining proper control over the compost, or something like that. To prevent undue orders and volume, something like that.
Is there any community garden area?
Well, I'm wondering if the management provision under A says a manager shall be designated, doesn't say how, by whom.
I don't think it matters, I think it's up to the...
Community garden.
Community garden members.
Yeah, I don't think we need to have it so strict that it has to be an appointment by the board or anything.
No, no. Okay. But then I take it, if there is a community, the community garden itself doesn't require a permit, right? Yeah, as far as additional hours, but I guess there's, there's no mechanism for determining whether a community garden is being operated pursuant to these provisions.
Yeah, as a use, it would be required to have a zoning clearance, which is where the planning department verifies compliance with these requirements. So through that zoning clearance, they would identify, you know, make sure the managers identified, you know, make sure that the community garden operates, is operating in a zone it's allowed to operate in and according to these standards.
So Martha, where would that be provided?
Administration, your favorite.
Administration.
Administration.
Yeah, the last and final...
I can't wait for administration.
Yeah, well, we'll see when we get to administration.
Just a general thought, we had various categories in the last week or so, where the administration section was going to actually provide how something was going to be set up. I think in these various sections, including community gardens, it might be good to have the citation to, to the part of the administration section that is pertinent. I know...
That would lead right to, so the zoning clearance is required for any new use or structure or addition, even, you know, kind of a building, a business license. So that's just, it's like the planning sign-off of something being reviewed for compliance with the code. And that applies to everything, so that, that cross-reference would...
This one might not be a good example, but there were others last week that we were talking about, well, how does this come about? Well, it's going to be in the administrative section. And I think since we're, we want the zoning code to be user-friendly, I think when people are looking at the sections that have the title of the area where they're, they're interested in, that section ought at least have reference to the part of the administrative code that gives rise to the, to the use that we're talking about. I don't know if you remember last week, there were several times when we said, well, how does this come about? Well, it's going to be in the administrative section. Since we're going for user-friendly, I think that that would be a, this is not a good example, I agree. It would be a good idea to, when people look at the subject matter, that they know if it's not where they're looking, they know where to find it.
I think that perhaps we need to differentiate between an informal community garden that is several neighbors combining together to do something, and a community garden that's on public land, or that, an open parcel that a different landowner is allowing a block to use for the, or, I just foresee this looks like a huge image overreach if what you're really talking about is three neighbors get together and decide that they're going to share a little chunk of land on one of their parcels to do, have a joint garden. I guess if you're going to have a produce stand, that would throw you into a different...
Yes.
Yeah. It just seems like most of this you're never even going to hear about, you're not going to know about, it's just going to happen quietly, and there's not going to be any complaints, and no one's going to be coming in to get any kind of permit.
And Madam Chair, the definition section doesn't really differentiate between what's, you know, something that's done on publicly-owned land and something that's done between three neighbors and so on and so forth. So I'm not really sure if it's, if the intent is to separate those two types of uses, perhaps in community gardens, you know, that take a block, or, you know, half a block of a city, because people just have the need to grow their own vegetables, and it starts with one person, and then it becomes two people, three people, and before you know it, it's something that, yeah, the city's also buying into. So we just need to think about, what is our perspective of what we think, what do we envision for a community garden?
I just think we need to differentiate between the two scales there.
Okay.
I would caution against that, because anywhere you kind of try and draw that line, right, like it's hard to define, is it three households, is it people within a certain amount of area? This is really intended to be an enabling ordinance, you know, you don't really, if somebody came in today, and whether it was on public property or private property, say a religious facility had some extra land and wanted to say, hey, why don't we do a community garden here? It would be difficult for Gina or the planners to look at that and say, oh, yes, you can do that, and here are the provisions for it. So it's really an enabling thing. If, say, a couple neighbors, you know, one neighbor has a large piece of land, and a couple neighbors have smaller ones, and they say, hey, can we all get together and kind of share a garden area on your property? Like, leave, that's not going to rise to anything, you know, that's not really a use that anybody would recognize or would change. If for instance, if for some reason it did, they would say, hey, I think you're operating a community garden, there are provisions that apply to that. And again, that would be kind of worst-case scenario, they would come in, you'd look at this and say, okay, who's the manager? Somebody's going to volunteer, I'm the point person. You know, you, all right, work on your garden between dawn and dusk, don't be out there in the middle of the night, you know? Your buildings have to comply with the Bay zoning district, which is what it is. You, you know, you can't be using heavy equipment, like, you have to maintain it. And so I, I kind of, I hear what you're saying as far as, and I think it makes sense kind of theoretically, I think in practice, coming up with those details ties your hat and makes it more complex, and can cause some more confusion and complexity versus resolving some.
Well, I would suggest, and actually you hit upon language that brought this up, if the definition was use of land by three or more households, or two or more households, or whatever, I guess it'd be three or more, that would be a way that you'd avoid the public ownership, the church ownership, et cetera, et cetera, and yet have the very small sharing of gardening clearly not be covered, so we don't have a whole question of, well, are you in the nudge, nudge, wink, wink, community garden, or in the managed community garden category? So how about having number of households being the line?
I think she was actually warning us potentially against that. I think it probably has way more to do with the scale of the garden itself, and who owns the land it's on, but I just think we need to look at it so that it doesn't look like we are trying to permit and manage something that is far below the threshold of becoming an issue. And I'm probably super sensitive to this, because we have over and over again created rules and obligations and permits, and then we fail to enforce them in any meaningful way.
That's what I meant by the nudge, nudge, wink, wink category.
Public comment?
Sure.
Yep, I have to back up Michelle and Tim on this one. And I understand staff in the consultant's position here, trying to create an enabling ordinance, but there's also a potential for an ordinance to be a canceling ordinance. You know, the, the community garden isn't the issue, the fact that the neighbor doesn't like the other neighbor becomes the issue, and this, and the, and then they weaponize the zoning code as a way to get back at the neighbor, right? So I like the idea of the setting some lower-level threshold, like three or more, that would, you know, assure folks at that level or below that they're not going to be subject to the ordinance.
I have a question.
Sure.
What if the threshold revolved around size rather than number of families?
Right, maybe we can, you know, we can go our members or something.
Well, and I wouldn't say number of members, because somebody might want to do turn-ups, you know, if you get, a lot of people want to do turn-ups, it will not take up a whole lot of space, but if everyone wants to do corn, then it would take... Perhaps I'm suggesting that perhaps the threshold might be related to plot size, garden size, rather than number of family participants.
That's a good point, so half acre?
Acre.
I don't know, I think we'd have that.
I don't believe it, I have two questions.
I think the best way to do that would be to look at the ones we currently have in the community, and see to what size, what size are they, because I think they're going to vary from...
I don't think we know where they are.
Well, the only one that I'm aware of is West Point, and I don't know if it actually got developed, but I know that there was an inquiry a couple of years ago about a community garden, whether or not they actually, I think the parcel was owned commercial...
It's there.
Is it there? Yeah.
You might consult with the master gardeners, they should have their finger on the...
I know...
I have a question. So they define a community garden as something over a certain size. What then is, what if somebody comes in for a community garden under that size? What does the planner do?
Yeah, we say you're, you're not a community garden unless you're a half an acre.
And so, but I want to do a community garden that is 4,000 square feet. But you're telling me I'm not a community garden then?
Right, that, that's a good point. I, so I know there, there is or was a community garden on the Valley Springs School site.
Yeah, there is, you can build it.
So I think there are some out there.
So what are the, what are the concerns? So I'm not quite...
I don't have any concerns.
Yeah, I don't understand what the rub is.
Understanding.
But I do see how it could be, I think we're trying to look to the future, and I do see how a community garden, garden could become an issue, but it would have to be a pretty big operation.
There's also, I just wanted to throw this out there, there's also the possibility that doing things with neighbors on your property is an accessory use to a single-family residential, so there's a point where we could treat small enough gardens simply as an accessory use.
Yeah, I think if you don't, if you're not included in the official definition of community garden, doesn't mean that you can't do it.
That's tough, because, you know, we talk in general about if it's, and this is definitely something I would recommend, most of my colleagues would recommend this, you have a permissive zoning ordinance that says that anything that is not listed or designated by the director is similar to something listed is prohibited, and that's to prevent against surprises that we haven't thought about being permitted. And so most, if not all, counties have that. But on some of the smaller uses, you know, when we, I think the way to get around that is to interpret our accessory use section as encompassing things that would normally be associated with residential living. And so I think that's the way we would characterize it, is, well, no, it's not listed, but it's an accessory use. That's sort of the way, the way out. But yeah, generally, a land use is prohibited, if not somehow discussed or similar to something discussed.
But if we, if we didn't have any community garden provision at all in here, would that mean nobody could have joint gardens?
Well, I think, like I said, I think the county could interpret, we have a definition of an accessory use, and we talked about that in one of our recent hearings. An accessory use is sort of the section, and, you know, feel free to jump in, Martha or Gina, if you think that I don't know what I'm talking about here, but an accessory use that is sort of... use that is sort of what we define as the other uses of land that go along with this primary residential use, and we could interpret the code as not touching things like that that are within the realm of what people would do just living in houses. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it seems like this only becomes an issue when it's on parcel that is not somebody's parcel and they're up to them to decide what happens with it anyway. Like if I have a two-acre rural residential parcel and I want to have a garden and let my neighbors come and help me with it, who cares? Accessory use. But if we're asking to officially make some empty lot in the middle of San Andreas a community garden, then it seems like, well, you need some rules because...
Well, and that's what we intended for this, because this is clearly not enumerated as an accessory use, so it implies that it is a standalone use on, on a vacant parcel.
So we could say not associated with a residential garden plot, private residential garden plot or something like that, if you wanted to distinguish that.
I don't think we need to, why do we need to distinguish the difference between someone's garden that they might want to share?
Right.
Associated with that home.
We don't have to, I thought the ask was how to distinguish it. I thought that the, the commission was searching for a way to ensure that people interpret this as prohibiting that.
And I think Mr. Infazino's point is good too, we don't want this provision to be used as a weapon.
So do we just, can we just say this shall not apply to um gardens entirely contained on a residential parcel? I don't know, is there some way?
But they are.
Well, I guess I, I kind of, what I think I hear from county council, from staff is, is they don't think that having a couple neighbors help you garden your plot is, is an issue, but if you want to be extra clear, maybe we could put in the beginning of this section, you know, um, gardens operated as accessory to a residential use that may have, you know, maybe tended by the property owner as well as a maximum of three owners are not considered community gardens are instead regulated as an accessory use to the primary, you know, something to that effect in the introductory provisions to this.
Actually, I, I just think that we need to take a look at the definition. So by several individuals and households is the very last uh statement in the definition of a community garden. So if we took those words and put it at somewhere near the beginning, which is a community garden is a use of land by several individuals or households, and then all the other phrases to follow, because they're trying to separate what a community garden is from what, um, you know, somebody might want to do on their individual property. So if it falls into the category by several individuals or households, then it's a community garden. If it doesn't fall into that category, then it's not considered to be a community garden by this definition. So if we have other ideas in mind, then I think the way we need to do it is to actually clarify the definition to indicate that we're referring only to those, to those places where a community gets together, uh, and if it doesn't fall into that category, then it becomes an accessory use on somebody's property.
But I think, uh, I, I agree with you, although I, I think several is can be a point of contention, so I mean, I'd say three or more or something of that sort.
Yeah.
But when we talk about three or more individuals, well, you have three or more people in the same household, so I'd probably eliminate individuals.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I, that comes directly out of that.
But I think, I think Martha's on the right track as far as the, the, having it maybe be at the start of section seventeen point one, two, point oh nine oh, in language similar to what she was speaking of, which actually brings, brings to the fore the distinction between the regulated community garden and an accessory use. Um, I'd, I'd like to see them play around with this and see what you come back with.
Does the title not differentiate as it is? I mean, we're calling it a community garden, we have a definition, and as a result, we have um standards for that specific use.
But it's still not clear what the line is. Okay, several households would, by, my way of thinking would be three or more.
I think I heard Martha Miller say tended by others. I mean, I just, I don't, do we need a number? What if it's a bigger?
Yeah, I don't.
Well, yeah, no, I, 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 I would like to see what Martha can come up with.
Well, I think that's why she...
It's just when you read that you're going to have this liaison with the county, it's like, why is the county involved at all in a small accessory use?
Right.
But I can see if it's on a, a piece of property that is not otherwise occupied by anything else. So do you, so if there was an empty piece of residential property and there, so there is no primary residence established on that property, would people be allowed to, the neighbors be allowed to get together and have a community garden on that property?
Yeah, I would say the answer is yes.
Well, yes, but not, not according to our definition. You can't have an accessory use until you have a primary use and it has to be a residence.
Unless the use is agricultural in nature as we decided not too long ago.
But it's not an issue if it's an agricultural parcel, you could have your garden without doing anything. You have to assume an agricultural parcel, you know, there's just no issue, they have whatever garden they want. So it's really only an issue on a presidential parcel or, or potentially a commercial parcel that for some reason is empty and the neighbors get permission to, I mean, it's all really about it not being on somebody's own property and not being an allowed use. So do we have community, we don't have community gardens as a checkbox in each zone, right?
No.
No, we don't, and I think that's probably what we need to do is to have it such that it's a checkbox in each zone so that it doesn't become an issue. When somebody comes in and says, oh, I want to do X, Y, Z, it's right, actually, then the planner can answer the question, yes, you can, uh, and then we just have to figure out to what scale, uh, I'm not even sure if scale is relevant at this point.
Instead of it being permitted, you want it administrative?
No, I'm just, it, no, it would just be allowed, allowed, well, I think it depends. It's, it's all on whose property is it? Are you trying to do this on your own property or are you making an agreement? That's where community gardens become a problem, is you're trying to put them on publicly-owned land or you're trying to put them on land owned by somebody else, not part of the community garden, then you need a manager and somebody, some kind of an agreement with the property.
So do you just want to forget it altogether?
I, I, no, I, I think, I think it's a good thing to have, and I think we're spending a whole lot of time on something that hasn't been a problem at all thus far, but...
No.
Well, that's, but what, that's the problem when you start setting things down and...
Yes, exactly.
You see all the other problems. I keep trying to voice this off on the staff and Martha, nobody's taking me up on that, including them, but uh it seemed to me that they, they have heard our concerns and maybe they can figure out something that'll make people happy.
Well, I, I mean, I'd like to look and see what other places say.
So I, I, I do think that um Gina and I have taken notes and we think as far as you are in agreement, we think we kind of heard the concerns, so we will take a stab at it and also if you all or anybody wants to look at other places for examples and um pass anything else onto them, onto us, we're happy to consider that as well. I think we can take a stab at it.
I just point out to our new commissioner, this is why it's taking us a while to get through this.
I take back my question.
Yeah, I, I definitely think it's good to have something in here just in case you, well, you're ever to have the situation come up, you'd have something, some guidelines. Okay, so should we talk about emergency shelters?
Those will be easy.
Right.
You'd think a garden would.
Yeah, like everyone wants a garden.
Yeah. One question I have is on the emergency shelters, looking at the current provision, seventeen point oh four, point two five oh, there are many elements that are not covered here, and I think in part, some of those, it's just that the general noise ordinance would apply and this sort of thing, and there's no need to have a specific provision in there, but we have uh in the current ordinance, it has the requirement for a management and operation plan, uh, provision for storage of uh, of the, the people who are staying there with their, their articles, pets, which is often or maybe always an issue in, in emergency shelters, um, the uh, there's no requirement for an annual report, uh, there's no uh, there's nothing in here about parking specs, specifications such as, you know, how many places you might need, this sort of thing. Uh, anyhow, the...
Yeah, you're absolutely correct, and that's because uh state law actually limits what jurisdictions may regulate and in regard to emergency shelters and your, um, the state law precludes you from having those Texas standards. So we did as much as possible, keep your existing ones, but we took out the ones that you're really actually not, um, you're precluded from having pursuant to state law.
I thought there'd probably be a good answer.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think, I actually kind of recalled reading about that when we were debating what's an emergency shelter versus a disaster.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, I would suggest then that, uh, I mean, basically you're saying these are the things we can regulate and those other things are beyond us. That's, that makes it very easy.
It's perfect then.
Then exterior lighting, I, I would, I think we ought to cite to the lighting sections that are in the, I think they're in the, the general regulation.
Right.
Seventeen point oh one, point oh nine oh, and seventeen point oh seven, point oh eight oh, um, as far as, uh, we don't want to, if we have specifications that cover it, why don't we just cite to those instead of using terms like fully lit parking, et cetera?
Okay, yeah.
Yep, okay.
So you're going to force security, I guess? Actually, security is covered on the next page.
Right, well, right, so are we, are we required to require security?
You're not required to require security, but you can have requirements for it. You can require it, you don't have to require it.
It says Shelby.
Right, we are requiring it.
Yes, you are, it's training.
So I'm wondering if uh we've talked to anybody that, do they have security now?
Uh, we don't have any emergency shelters.
Yeah, we don't have any emergency shelters.
Yeah, I think, I think security is mentioned in the current...
Well, no, that's, that wasn't my question. My question was, so there were, um, what do they call, now they're called the resource connection, I want to call them HRC still, uh, so they had emergency shelter for people on a very small scale, I just, I don't believe they had any kind of security. So I'm wondering if this situation, if this now would require them even for that small-scale situation to have security.
I think having security is good, but trained security implies that you have to hire a security guard, and I don't think that that's helpful.
I mean, this...
Because that's a cost associated with it.
Let, let's see what the definition of emergency shelter is.
I don't know about that, that didn't work out so well, did it?
Well, this is a little bit different situation because this is for up to six months and although it, it doesn't have any numbers for population, I mean, their situation was really size of a house.
The, the bottom line is that the need for security, because when you have a, an emergi- emergency situation, you're going to have families with children, with other types of people uh in the same uh, in a, in a same environment, somebody given a scenario of um, of, of why it's even necessary to, sometimes you even have to screen uh the types of individuals as you allow into these shelters because, just because you have so many people out there who might be in need of a shelter but who are socially uh, uh, at social, at different social levels and, and not providing an environment in which uh you, you create access to certain types when you put these kinds of, of families together. And since we don't want to separate families with children from other adults and individuals, uh, if, if this is not a, a facility run by the county, which I don't think it will be, then whoever's running the facility has to be aware that there might be a need to have, uh, you know, uh, security on hand in case, unless, you know, we're going to call the sheriff and that type of thing.
Could the language be on an as-needed basis?
It, it could be, yeah, I mean, if we're only talking fifteen, twenty people and they're not staying overnight, that's a totally different scenario, but when you have people who might be staying overnight for an extended period of time, yes, that would be a need to...
We're talking one family who has fled, who is, who the resource connection is serving.
Yeah, and they, and they would, they would vet their people anyway, yeah.
That's what I'm suggesting, on as needed, for example, when you have that say, sensitive circumstance that you described, uh, then of course you would go ahead and activate or for lack of a better word, bring on some security personnel that would ensure, uh, ensure safety and security, because ultimately, under any condition, that's what you're going to want is a safe and secure environment.
Right.
And my belief is that your uh facility staff should be able to provide that, but not to the extent where you have a family that's fleeing a dangerous situation. So under those circumstances, you'd want, I think, some type of, some level of security.
Well, I, I, I guess, I'm sorry Martha, I, I think the issue here, if I'm getting it, if I, if I understand it correctly, the issue here is the language about individuals trained in providing, in providing security, that's what Commissioner Parker has issue with, which means it, it's an additional cost.
Yeah.
And, and I don't know to what effect uh cost has to do with it. If the, if the shelter has been operated, I'm going to assume that they're probably receiving some uh funding or, or grant funding or some kind of uh, of, of monetary assistance to, to alleviate uh some of their, some of their overheads. So uh again, but I think it's very important that uh we, we understand the difference between providing security, which would just mean people walking around, and providing trained security, which means people who can... who would be able to assess a potential volatile situation before it arises. So our new commissioner is somebody who is, who is, who served in that environment, and I think you know, you can advise us as to, you know, how those things work.
So can, is this something that we can feel comfortable with leaving up to the discretion of the onsite management as to when they need security?
That was my point. That's a good idea.
At the discretion of.
You could just say may instead of shall. Right.
There we go.
See, that's why you're here.
Martha, did you have some other input?
Well, if, if the collective is that there's an issue with that security, like, I would just take it out then. Don't put may in, or don't put you can do this. They know they can do that. You know, I would just take H out.
Well, I, I think it depends on the scale of the facility. If we're talking about basically a house that you're moving a family into.
So that's not an emergency shelter, and that's what I wanted to clarify. So that may be a transitional facility. It might be a supportive housing. It might be residential care. There's all different types of assistance, like type things. An emergency shelter in this context is is really a specific thing. And for that, and consistent with what I've seen across the state and best practices, this inclusion for a security requirement is not onerous or not out of, you know, it's pretty common. But what you're talking about, I think what you're talking about, these small scales, you know, resource agencies that provide services to, yeah, people in an unsafe home or you know, a a service facility providing shelter to some homeless individuals. But on this small scale, I'm really kind of this residential type scale, those are different than these, this emergency shelter. So I just don't want you to change these provisions to address those, because those are, are separate.
So I'm, I'm fine with that if we just clarify that the short-term crisis housing, I just don't want to have service that we actually have in our county be impacted by this.
Well, the current And they, they won't be. And, and I, again, I like truly understand kind of the desire as you're reading through this and for everything you want to say what it's not. And that seems like it's very, it's clarifying, right? But it actually, once you get to start using it, it becomes kind of more confusing when there's all these like, you're this, but not if you're this, and then you're that. So if you were that type of domestic, say a domestic shelter, island shelter or something, and you're really serving, you know, a limited number of population, you know you're not an emergency shelter. You're never coming into this section.
Okay.
This section is only, it only covers homeless persons, where our current ordinance talks about also shelter for people needing emergency housing due to disaster or other situations. So I think
That's a separate section.
I think we should, under the definition of emergency shelter, which I understand, this is the state's term, so we're stuck with that, that we include at the, at the end of the definition or use classification, does not include shelter for persons needing emergency housing due to disaster or other situation, and then a citation to whatever provision is going to cover that, if we have any. But I think that's, when I first read emergency shelter, why, you know, I was, I was thinking, well, did the Red Cross approve these and this sort of thing? I was thinking disaster emergency shelter. So I do think we need to, to take that out of, clearly take that out of the
I, I actually heard what Martha said, and I, does an emergency shelter have a license? A real emergency shelter like we're talking about? Are they some kind of a licensed facility?
Madam Chair, I don't think they are. The other, it's the other ones that do have, they have to be licensed facilities, the ones that take care of, of, you know, like a residential care facility.
No, that, yeah.
Yeah.
Different issue. They are not licensed facilities, the ones I'm talking about, but I think, I would think these might be. I don't know.
We can do the research.
Public comment?
Yes.
Tom in Fasino, Calgary Planning Coalition. Yeah, I, on the back, on the security issue, let's remember where we're putting these in, under what conditions. If you're doing an emergency shelter in a commercial zone, you're going to be subject to a conditional use permit. So when you guys establish the community, the conditional use permit, you can set whatever level of security or lack of security you feel comfortable with, right? So it's not that critical there. The other one is it's also allowed in public and semi-public zones. And that's a, and emergency shelters are permitted use there. So there won't be the chance for you to adjust the level of security. So that's something to consider when you're deciding how you want to define this security code, uh, security requirements.
I'm act, I think I've been convinced we could leave it alone.
Yeah.
The default is they require security for this type of facility that that we're discussing, which is defined by the state.
So, but leave it alone, meaning take, take it out?
No, leave it just as is.
No, I didn't get any traction apparently with what I was suggesting about making it clear in the definition that we're not
I got you on that.
I'm taking Martha's advice that we don't, we shouldn't be trying to trying to exclude a bunch of things in an effort to clarify unless it's really helping.
Well, I think, I mean, it certainly was helpful to me to make it, when it was clear that these, the disaster type emergency shelters, because you could, people could say I'm homeless, my house just burned. But, so that by one interpretation of the, of the definition, these are homeless persons. But I, I know what we're trying to do here is to, to implement what we can under the state law. But that state law does not deal with persons who need emergency housing due to disaster or other situation. And I think it's a very clear question that comes up when you read about an emergency shelter.
Okay.
I got it. Yeah.
It came up for us because we had combined them in the past partially.
It came up for me before I even looked at the current.
One more public comment, quick?
Sure.
Okay. We had a situation recently in San Andreas where there was a RV parked on Main Street, and some people were living out of it, and that was a problem. And my question is, how can we avoid legislating away or regulating away charity? Because, you know, my inclination in those kind of situations is, you know, I go to the St. Vincent de Paul Society Church and says, you know, who's got a backyard that's fenced that where somebody can park their RV? And somebody volunteers and, you know, they offer them a place to stay. I'm having a hard time finding anywhere in the code where that might even be allowed and and are, I guess, you know, even, even if I, you know, you're not even allowed to camp on your own property for fourteen days. So I'm just wondering, is there some way we can make some accommodation for just ordinary, good old fashioned charity which people like to do here?
That's a very good point. It's just a tough one.
Yeah, and I, and I think the situation with the RVs is, is their location are public right away. So if you take that out of the equation, if they I think it would be a different, it would be a different set of rules that we have to deal with. But Tom is correct. You know, could they have gone onto a friend's property and tried to camp out in the RVs? Well, we have rules and regulations that, that basically say you can only do it for such a period of time. So the, the solution to that is go to an RV park and, and pay to hook up your effluent into, into, into a tank. So if it's we all know what happened, you know, with the, with the last fire we had, and we're still reeling from, from the effects of that and the emergency provisions that the county adopted at that time have all expired. So is this a good time to try to insulate ourselves from another potential disaster? I mean, we can prevent fires, but are we going to be ready to be able to quickly accommodate the needs of the residents at that time without running health and skill center?
So are you suggesting that those emergency measures that allowed people to live on their property in an RV be extended under certain circumstances?
That's up to the board.
Yeah, it wouldn't be something that
I mean, the board did extend those after the Butte Fire for a number of years, but all of that is Gabriel. I mean, there are provisions written into code for extensions, and the board has that authority, but
Yeah, I was just trying to clarify what
Yeah.
What the, if there was a specific suggestion there.
So when you look at, let me just clarify something. When you look at HCD's, I mean HUD's website, they put shelters and emergency housing together. So emergency housing and shelters. Now, and if you look at the, the intent, you could have emergency housing, which would be anybody. And then you would have shelters, which might be people who are fleeing from, let's say, an emergency. Our specific definition here, I think, tends to deal with the latter and not the former. So, but should we, are we creating a situation where you have Group A, which is people who are needing emergency housing, being included in Group B, which is those who are actually escaping an immediate disaster? So, and if the answer is no, then, then I think we need to provide opportunities for those who are in Group A. We, I think, our HHISA is working with some, you know, local motels to, to, to do that, but we don't have enough capacity. So
So those are actually separated out currently, and they're carried forward separately. So the emergency housing for disaster relief is that post-disaster section of code that I don't believe we've gotten to yet, so.
Okay.
I think the, Tom's question really had to do with
Allowing RVs.
You have a friend who's suddenly homeless, who knows, some life circumstance, and you want to allow them to park in your driveway.
Then you have people living in recreational vehicles, which is not something I think we want to allow. We haven't allowed it in the past, and we're not proposing to allow it. I think it's going to cause a number of issues with neighboring properties and sewage disposal and
Better to allow people to live in their RV parked, parked in your driveway or on some other portion of your property than to have them parked in Walmart parking lot. I don't know. We don't have Walmart, so we don't have that alternative.
Wall and Valley Springs are parked all over.
Yeah. So I think that's really his question is what, where is there the The reality is, if somebody's doing it in the short term, it's probably not going to be an issue. It's, it's when they're imposing on their neighbors over a long period of time that someone's going to say something. The answer is, because the neighbors in residential, smaller parcels, the neighbors are not going to
I think that's a very sensitive subject that's going to be very controversial. I don't think we want to dive down that hole today.
Not right now.
Not right now. Maybe that's a, a subject for another time through a separate study session in consideration, but I, I don't think it's something that we want to roll into, into
I don't think we have the room to roll it into this, and it's, it wouldn't be covered by the general
Right.
Plans, environmental
Right.
Review.
Yeah, we have to be very careful that we're not strained.
Yeah. It's a real issue, though.
Sure.
Employee housing for farmers.
One suggestion I have is that the, the very last sentence in subdivision B is that we say such employee housing shall be deemed, put the word deemed in there, an activity that in no way differs from an agricultural use. I think that makes more sense than declaring it to be an activity that in no way differs from an agricultural.
That's fine.
I didn't have anything else.
Farmers markets?
Yeah.
Got one.
So, and, and I understand that, that this provision would apply to employees on a cannabis plantation.
Would it?
No.
I don't think so.
Anything cannabis related is all inclusive in the cannabis.
Actually, though, I think, having looked at state law, that because the state, you know, the Department of Food and Ag is what governs cannabis, and that from the state's perspective, cannabis is ag, and this is a state regulation requiring us to treat farm housing a certain way. So I think only when we have some local thing that is not required by the state, do we get to say cannabis is not ag. I think in this, the safer position would be to assume that it applies to cannabis workers.
That's going to be
I, I, that was, you know, that was a quick read, and if somebody has another, but I did have a concern that we might be required.
So should we make that very clear then? Because I could see how we would interpret that differently somewhere down the road, understanding that commercial cannabis is totally regulated in a separate section of code.
And it might need more research on my part. It was, you know, I was sort of doing an omnibus research package for Planning Commission and didn't have time to take a deep dive, and I might need to talk more with my colleagues, but it's possible that it would, we would be required to treat that differently.
I just, I get nervous when we're talking about cannabis kind of like
Yeah.
So I don't know if we want to ask
Being, being regulated in more than one section of our
Well, yeah, the problem is that it's regulated.
Yeah, I understand, sure.
And we could choose not to have it, that's true.
Okay.
But I don't know that when it comes to the housing, I'm not clear. I don't feel, I can't just confidently say that we can pretend it doesn't.
Should we just do a little more deeper dive?
Dig in more and ask my colleagues.
Yeah, why don't you do that, and we'll just leave this as it is.
And couldn't we, in here, if we need to, refer people to the cannabis ordinance for housing? for housing on cannabis farms, so that it's not,
Does it currently discuss housing?
No.
I'm not familiar, to be honest with you.
Well, but I'm thinking it should. If we want to keep them as separate issues, we should duplicate that.
They do talk about workforce housing in the cannabis markets.
Alright, so I think we'll do more research and see what we have, and look at current state law. Okay, farmers markets, another item that seems like really puppies, kittens, and daisies.
I didn't have any. I guess the only question would be, do the produce stands at the community gardens fall within farmer's market definition?
I don't think so. Produce stands have a different definition when they're on ag lands.
Yeah. You can have a produce stand on your agricultural property if you're growing whatever, walnuts.
Not cannabis.
Walnuts, not cannabis.
Yeah, it, it is, wouldn't be.
If you, you're growing walnuts and, and apples on your property in your zone ag, you can have a produce stand selling walnuts and apples.
So there isn't any need to have a mention in here, the farmer's market does not include produce stand on a community garden?
It, yeah, not the same thing.
Okay.
Okay. Home occupations.
Where's the definition of a home occupied occupation?
If you meet all the requirements of this, you're a home occupation.
So there is, there is no definition per se? Well, that was certainly something that occurred to me right away. So if we, if we were gonna put it into the use classifications, we would say home occupations are those activities that are covered by seventeen point one, two, point one, three, zero.
Sure. I'm sorry, I know Martha got that. What, I'm sorry, what was that?
Oh, yeah, I did, I was just, I was just amplifying on her, what she was saying, um, I just, it just bothers me that we have this term, and whether it applies to all home occupations in any residential unit of the county. When we don't, we aren't, didn't we have some sort of definition for in-house? Well, that's, that's cottage industries, right?
Well, then, it says here.
Cottage food is included. Cottage food operator, operators are included in home occupations.
Yeah, which, I had another question there as far as, what's the definition of a cottage food operation? Somehow, I, I'm bothered by just the fact that, well, we know it when we see it, and we'll regulate it. And once we regulate it, well, it determines that it is indeed it.
Now, cottage food operation is something that's registered with the state as Class A or Class B cottage food operations.
So, so we could cite to a state statute?
Only for cottage food operations, right?
Yes, no, I understand that.
Well, it, it does.
Well, I, I would suggest cottage food operations, so we do have a citation there.
Um, there is, um, respective health and safety standards, uh, set forth in whatever, whatever, whatever.
Better California health.
And it's, it's further regulated and permitted through, um, the Environmental Management Agency.
Okay.
Yeah. So they would actually be the agency that would tell us, hey, this is a cottage food operator, and we have given them a permit for such, um, so I don't, I don't think it's,
Okay, uh, I, I, I,
The planning,
I looked it off from the cottage food operations, but I, I'm still concerned about home occupations. I, you know, we use the term throughout this section, and it, you get the impression that anything that you're doing in your house for revenue is a home occupation, and then can be limited in these various standards.
Right, yeah.
But, but I think we ought to say that. I mean, I, it just seems, to me, it's not, it's not a term that, when you walk down the street and you say, whoa, how are you, and do you have any home occupations? Or, you know, instead of, what are you doing these days? Um, it sounds like a term that needs a definition to me.
You mean, what a home occupation is?
Yeah.
We do have a definition.
Where?
No, there's not a specific definition. We're just basically saying that you are a home occupation if you fall within this criteria. If the, if you meet these standards, you are this.
Well, if you don't meet these standards,
Then you're not, then you're not.
You're not a home occupation, and it's not that you're in violation of this provision, you're,
You're not.
You're just not a home occupation.
Right, you can have a home occupation if you meet these standards. If you don't meet these standards, then you are another use, and you need to go find an appropriately zoned parcel for such.
Nobody else has a concern.
I wouldn't be, um, the lawyer in me has a concern. I, I, I mean, again, we, they see things a little differently because they talk about, is it plain language, and I'm not sure it's plain lang-, I mean, I do, I, I just wanted to validate.
I would say that we should have a definition that says a home occupation is an occupation that takes place entirely within a, a residence in which there's no signs visible on the outside. Uh, that, just a summary, a short summary and a reference to this section, and that's,
So, we, we can put a, a definition. I wouldn't summarize standards in a definition. You just have the standards, and you have, a, a definition is simply a definition. But I think we could put a simple definition of a home occupation as a business operated out of a residence.
Entirely within a single-family or multifamily residence.
Okay.
I think that would be helpful.
So what, what does seventeen sixty-eight then? Wha- what, what is that? I mean, we have a section seventeen point six eight that identifies all of these things that we're talking about. Seventeen sixty-eight, zero, two, zero.
That's the current, 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 and what does it say?
Uh, a, a residential occupation is permitted in, in the interim resource. And so, location of a residential occupation, well, actually, you're looking for what a definition is. It's telling us what a residential occupation, or what a home occupation is. It's not giving us a definition, but I think you're absolutely correct. We should have a definition of what a home occupation is. The other thing with home occupations is now, is that it becomes a judgment call. So you could run a law practice where you see a few, uh, people a day, and you could say, oh, it's just, you know, I'm just seeing three people a day. You don't need a license, you don't have to do any kind of tax, uh, you know, uh, re, um, file any, any, any kind of taxes for that. And other people do something that's even more intensive than that, and they don't come to the county and say, I need a home occupation permit. So, um,
But it's described right here, what's allowed.
What's allowed, yeah, we know, it doesn't generate traffic, and if it does, it's no more than three or four people per day. I mean, this is just a standard, uh, language that you find in any, in any zoning code, in any jurisdiction, that tells you what the parameters are, or what,
We give business licenses for home occupations all the time.
All the time, yeah.
Um, and we actually have a questionnaire in our department that we require business license applicants to complete that helps us evaluate whether or not they are a true home occupation, or whether they rise to the level of, um, another use that should be located in, say, either a commercial or an industrial zone district.
Right.
Well, if Martha's, uh, agreeable to having a definition, that's my,
We can do that.
That takes care of me.
Okay.
Yeah, we just need to define what it is.
Mobile home parks.
Oh, I'm sorry. Now, I turned the page. The, uh, on page sixty-eight, sub-paragraph ten, uh, we talk about shall not generate more than ten pedestrian automobile or truck trips per day. Is that what we're talking about?
Right.
Yeah.
I'd suggest we put in per day.
Per day. For the life of the daughter.
Public comment?
Yes.
Okay, um, I think you did a great job here. The only thing I want to remind people of is when you're looking at onsite client contact, you limit it to one person at a time, or three students at a time. And on traffic, you limit it to ten people per day. Um, I want you to remember those standards when we're talking about, um, event venues, or wedding sites, or those other things that, so, you know, these are very conservative standards. And, uh, so if we're expecting this level of, you know, limitations on home occupations, you know, think about how that compares to when we're look, when we start to look at, you know, events in residential, rural residential areas.
A- and actually, that, Tom, you reminded me of my one thing I had marked here, which is limited to one client at a time. That doesn't really make sense. I mean, I could see three or something, but one at a time seems kind of onerous. I mean, if you're a person like me, you most likely gonna have two clients coming at a time. If you're an attorney, you could have two clients coming at a time.
Yeah, I, I think that's, I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
But I think you could just make it a blanket three, rather than,
Yeah, I, I think three would be very reasonable. Not more than one car's worth of people.
Right, and, and I think that is, that is the genesis of, that is, you know, we don't want four or five people arriving at the same time, and that traffic, which we're trying to control in a residential neighborhood, now becomes a problem. So, and that's why the limitation is, you see one person, they leave, you see the next one, they leave, you see the next one, they leave. But if you see two or three people at the same time, fine.
Yeah. Obviously, we don't want these home occupations to take on, you know, the appearance of, of, you know, a commercial business, so, um,
Exactly, yeah.
So we say it should be limited to three at any time, we can just put a period after time.
Well, I, no, it's fine to say, except for the,
Well, but, but then we're still limited to three students at one time. So, I mean, it isn't really an exception.
Yeah, it's just not really getting anything more. I don't know. You're right. That would be simple. Yes, Martha?
Yep, yeah, got it.
She said the magic words.
Yes, got it.
Okay, anything else that anybody has before we move on to mobile home parks? All right.
At some point, and just remind me, um, and I don't know, Martha, I don't know when you think that it's an appropriate time to bring it up, but, um, one of the, uh, one of the proposals in the draft is to eliminate the rural home industry zone district. And, um, through the, through the noticing that we did of the, um, proposed zone changes, we've started to get some feedback from individuals in those zones. And so that's kind of sparked some conversation in our department and, um, and with Martha as to, um, the possibility of rolling in to code those standards that we have currently for rural home industry, roll them into code, um, and require a use permit instead of, 'cause right now, just as a reminder, if you fall into this standard of this rural home industry, you could now zone your parcel RM and then apply for a use permit to allow the rural home industry, whatever that is. So with the elimination of that zone, now people are concerned, well, hey, you know, I, I bought this property thinking that, you know, there might be an opportunity for me to apply for a use permit for a rural home industry, and now you're taking that away from me. And it started to become obvious that that is a real thing in our county. So, I mean, there's lots of small, um, rural home businesses that, um, are more of an industrial kind of a use, like, you know, maybe a little woodworking shop, or, um, a small machine shop, or, um, I've seen the use permits for, um, various other things, like, one of them was a, um, a small sawmill, whether or not we wanna allow that, but whatever. Um, so there was a wide range of uses that were, I think, small enough that could be accommodated on a larger parcel that's maybe zoned, uh, residential, not necessarily R1, but maybe RR, or even, you know, larger parcels like A1, or RA, or General Forest. Um, and so, if they didn't have that opportunity, they would, we would be forcing them to go out and find an industrial zoned piece of property. You know, and if you're a sole operator, or maybe you've got one guy that comes in and does some welding for you, or you're running your own shop, and you're just, you know, taking orders and, and working at your own pace, that really isn't the same thing as this full-blown, you know, industrial-sized machine shop that employs twenty people and is doing this mass production kind of a thing. So, we may wanna consider, you know, rolling in some, uh, some regulation that allows for those smaller businesses to still apply for a use permit in certain zones. And I think Martha and I were gonna bring something back to you for your cons, uh, for your review, but we haven't, we haven't quite put that together yet.
Conceptually, that makes a whole other sense to me.
Right, right.
Good idea.
I mean, you think of the amount of industrial property we have, and it's very little. And so, you know, I mean, there's a lot of those small businesses that are operating right now. And, um, and like I said, it just didn't occur to us when we just said, okay, we're just gonna eliminate the RM zone, what kind of effect that was gonna have. And so, like I said, it started this conversation about Calabres being unique in that we don't have this, you know, vast area of land zoned industrial, and all of our commercial uses are all along the corridor. So unless you wanna go out and rent a piece of property, or maybe, maybe have an opportunity to buy, you know, there's not a lot available out there. So, it just kinda makes sense for us as a county to be able to allow for, um, that, like I said, that smaller kind of a business that might fall a little bit out of the ordinary of the rural home occupation. Uh, so it's a little, it's a little more than that, but it's not quite that big industrial use that we're talking about.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I think we definitely need it.
Good.
I see so many small businesses that are one person, or one person plus one employee,
Right.
Operating out of a garage or a barn.
Sure.
They're not, just, the neighbors might not even notice that.
Right, and if you have a use permit process, then at least you can identify whether or not there are any impacts associated with those uses, and you can condition them or otherwise mitigate them as nee-, as needed.
Yeah, I think anything we can do to make it easier for people.
Right, well, and that's the whole intent of, you know, what we're doing is,
Perfect.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
All right, we'll bring something back to you then.
That's a great example of your responding positively to the, what you're hearing from the,
Well, and that's why we just have really been trying to encourage, you know, participation, um, with the public, because, you know, we all sit in a, you know, a specific area, and we're thinking in a certain way. And so, until you start getting that feedback and that collaboration, then you just don't really have an understanding of what someone else is thinking, um, and how it really affects them. So, um, yeah, just keep taking notes.
I have a question.
Yes.
Before we move to mobile home parks, on page sixty-nine, Equipment for Cottage Food Operations, there's a, a regulation regarding smoke and steam, but not objectionable odors. And I was wondering if, And I was wondering if there was a reason for that, or whether we don't care about objectionable odors?
That's a good point.
That I don't have an answer for.
It's objectionable.
Yeah, that's objectionable.
Well, it's a residential neighborhood, right?
This is not a farming zone, this is a...
It's not a commercial zone, it's not a...
Right.
It's...
Yeah, I think...
We can certainly check with environmental management to see if there are, if we've missed some regulation. I'll, I'll pass this by them, but, um... And see if they have anything that they wish to add.
There's the whole question of what's objectionable, though.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, well, if you bought a house, I mean, how many acres do I have to surround it with before I can breathe or go to sleep at night? It's kind of where it comes to, right? If it's noisy, you know, if it smells bad, it's like, at some point, you have to say, well, it's a residential zone. If you want to make awful smells, you need to go to a, you know, commercial zone, or something like that.
I think the question is something that might not be objectionable to lots of people, but is objectionable to a particular neighbor.
If everybody likes cupcakes except one neighbor, and that's what they're making.
Popcorn.
Yeah. Can't stand that big butt smell.
Just fish products.
So we're really gonna, we're gonna, really gonna put the, the, the home commercial operation over the residential...
That's not what we said.
Well, we don't.
We'd look into it and find some wording, but we wanted to be careful about just saying an objectionable odor.
Right.
Okay.
And we have to remember that the state regulates this, so...
Yeah, there you go.
But I will certainly pass this section through environmental management just to make sure that we have captured everything.
And we can be stricter than the state, just to let everybody know what the options, it's up to us.
All right. Mobile home parks, the charm, the charm, a fourth time or whenever.
Okay.
How does, how does, um... What, what permitting process or whatever goes into establishing a mobile home park? Or does that, is that covered in the use classification? Who, who... If, if I decided I always wanted to have a mobile home park, where do I go to...
You see what zones it's allowed in, and you develop it in conformance with...
Right, so right now, it's a combining zone. It's not specific to a certain base zone. So right now, we're, we're proposing to eliminate the combining zone and just simply, uh, reference the, um, the standards. So, um, you still have to get a use permit, I'm certain.
Yeah, so a conditional use permit in residential zones.
Right. So, um, if you want to, to start up a mobile home park, then, uh, instead of rezoning your parcel to, um, the, to the overlay zone, you would simply just need to apply for a conditional use permit, comply with all these standards, which, um, are standards that are... Correct me if I'm wrong, Martha, but these are state standards through, um... I think we just rolled these over right from code, but you did some... Did we do some modification, updating?
We didn't do much. We basically took your current standards that apply in the overlay, and apply it, they would be applied through the use permit process. Um, you did get some comment that the state precludes you from operational requirements, applying operational requirements. So we'll, I don't believe we're in, um... Have a problem with that, but we'll just recheck that. But so somebody from the, a mobile home kind of advocacy group, um, did provide some comment on that.
So once it's established, it's actually taken over by the state, so we don't have any jurisdiction after we, it's established?
Maybe I missed something. But what's all this regulation that's in here?
What is all the regulation? Um, well, it sets up the actual standards for the park itself, like, um, you know...
I guess, I, I, I'm confused about what's the, what are the state standards that...
Oh, you mean, do they differ from, from our standards?
Yeah.
Um, I don't believe so, but we can go ahead and certainly vet that directly against state regs.
Well, I'm like, are the state regs just about the operation of the park?
Yeah.
Is it the setting of the park?
Yeah.
That is local, is that a distinction?
I'm not, I'm not certain, because honestly, I don't think we've permitted a single park since I've been here.
Years.
Yeah.
No, state regs defer the, um, land use and these types of development standards to local. But once it's developed, then all the inspections and subsequent things is done by the state.
I see.
Yeah.
And when they inspect, would they be inspecting...
Yeah, they would do regular, they would do regular inspections.
No, they're not gonna inspect for local.
No, we would, we would pass along their, uh, the use permit, so they would obviously, um, have a copy of our conditional use permit that would lay out, you know, all of these standards and, and give them, uh, an idea of how many spaces were approved. Um, are there other provisions that were rolled into the use permit, such as a clubhouse, or a recreational facility, or a short-term camping kind of a situation? Because some of those are actually, you know, have both. Um, so they would have a copy of the use permit. They would actually be in charge of the inspections of the, like, the individual units themselves, um, and, and things.
Where are we requiring the use permit?
Where? It's in the, um, the use, um...
So...
The zone district tables.
Ah.
So back here under all the, all the tables that we create, the charts.
Yeah.
So we would, um, it would be referenced in a specific zone district as a conditional use.
Okay.
Yeah, my understanding is the state is looking to see if, uh, the condition of the park overall, if it's sort of, did, and the, if the units that are being rented to people are being taken. Because I guess that's a huge issue.
Sure.
So any kind of subsequent inspections of the units themselves, if somebody's roofing, or whatever, that's all done by the state.
For instance, you can, you can't, currently, you cannot put a manufactured home on any parcel of land in this county unless it's less than fifteen years old.
Right.
But in the designated mobile home park, that restriction wouldn't apply.
And there's ones in those, some parks that are...
Ancient.
Ancient. And there's been lots of controversies in other parts of the country over mobile home parks and that conditions people.
Yeah. And, and, and they have really deteriorated over the years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So then, um, like under A3, when it talks about unless it can be shown that it had a good space for a patio or something, that would be as part of the use permit?
Yeah, so they would actually show us a plan. So we would have a full, a full site plan, um, that would show us all the individual spaces and the dimensions of those, along with the road widths and everything else. So it would be a requirement of the use permit process.
Yeah, I'd, I'd suggest that we make some sort of reference to that table that, that shows where mobile home parks are permitted and that there is a use, use permit required. Again, it's just...
Well, we do.
Well...
It's in the, it's...
Not, not in this section.
Well, I know, but you go here first.
I, uh, I would, I mean, I would look up mobile home parks and whatever index or just, um...
Well, you searched mobile home park in the code. You would find references right back here in, in, in the, uh, in the land use regulation charts, tables.
And, and I would, and, and on this A3, I'd eliminate the words can be and replace it with is, so unless it is shown.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is, is it a, it's a conditional use permit?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question. When they swap out a unit at some point in the future, do they need to get any permit for that?
Not from the county. It could, just goes probably right back to the, to the state, and they can swap out the units. Now, if they want to add spaces that were not previously permitted under the conditional use permit, they would then have to come back to the county to apply for a modification to that use permit to add additional spaces.
I was just thinking where they, they show you on their site plan that there's going to be plenty of exterior room around the model that they're putting in, and then they later add on to it, or swap it for a larger one, or there's... You're relying then on the state doing that. That, that's not...
Yeah.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
Public comment?
I'm sorry.
Let, Tim, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I have a question on, on C1, on page seventy. The idea that a stairway cannot, uh, projected in any required yard more than one foot, it does not make any sense to me. The, the following structures may be erected or projected into any required yard. One, eaves, stairways, and awnings not to exceed one foot. I, I view that as, what I'm reading is can't project out from the mobile home more than one foot?
No, if, if that, so the mobile home might be sitting here, and, but the line of the required yard is out here three feet, but you have an overhang that's four feet, so it sticks one foot into the required yard. It, that's a pretty typical thing.
There's, there's a gap between the, the mobile home itself and the yard.
And...
Required yard.
Yard. Yeah, not the yard, the required yard. The minimum required yard.
Required yard, okay. So this, this makes sense to somebody that knows what's going on.
We'll just call Michelle.
Well, it's a pretty common. And it's like that last step, you have stairs going down from your mobile home, so that last landing might stick slightly into the required yard. Is that correct, Martha?
Yep.
And I guess you just... Mobile homes are never so high, or the, the door is never so high as to require more than one foot into the required yard.
No, it's, it's all about, the, the side yard could be required to be five feet wide, but you could have an actual one that's seven feet wide, so your stairs might not even get close to the required yard, but they might extend slightly and be into that. But that required side yard could be different on every parcel, especially up here where there's... Things are, things are splayed and not a regular shape necessarily, all the parcels.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, Tom, there was something you wanted to add?
Uh, under item M, uh...
Storage areas.
Uh, mailboxes, page seventy-one.
Okay.
Um, the mobile home parks I'm familiar with are served by the group mailboxes, rather than the on-each-site mailboxes. Could we change this to say, for each mobile home site, there shall be a receptacle for mail deliveries in accordance with the standards prescribed by the local postmaster?
I see your point, and I think that's a good idea. Instead of, this looks as if it's requiring a mailbox on the mobile home.
Right.
Or at the mobile home.
Each mobile home site.
It says receptacle, it doesn't say box.
No, but each mobile home site shall be equipped, you know?
Each mobile home park.
If it's provided.
Yeah, so they're envisioning a, like, a mailbox at each mobile home space, uh, opposed to the grouping or the clustering of the box. Yeah.
So, I mean, I, if we just...
Change site to park?
No, it, it, if you change equipped to provided, well, no.
No, it's just each mobile home park
park.
shall be equipped or provided with a receptacle for mail deliveries in accordance with...
Then they can choose whatever they want.
Yeah, okay.
That seems like the little site.
Right.
Then they can choose whether they want their own individual mailbox, or the grouping.
How about with receptacles, uh, plural? Okay.
Yeah, I think receptacle speaks it more clear.
Got it.
Ready, outdoor dining and seating.
Just, I campaigned to make this user-friendly. I think at the end of, of subdivision A applicability, we should continue after the public works department. So it's subject to an encroachment permit issued by the public works department pursuant to chapter twelve point oh nine of the Calaveras Code.
Is that correct, correct? Because aren't we working on the new one?
Uh, no, the ones that Julie and the county council worked on was the last. Go ahead, Julie.
Okay, it's just becoming a permanent order.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, correct.
Right.
Perfect. Because I still haven't seen the permanent one.
Oh.
Martha, did you get that?
Yes.
Are we ready to move on?
Yeah. Glad to see that the parking was clarified to make it match the way we've been interpreting it. You know, in recent years, when it used to be any amount of outdoor seating was kicked in the parking.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's good, because, I mean, outdoor seating is, is seasonal, you know?
And, and chairs on the lawn, and how are we ever gonna enforce that?
Yeah, exactly.
Exactly. Okay. Outdoor display and sales.
Still haven't...
All good?
Which brings us to...
Dun, 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 dun.
So I do have one thing on the outdoor displays and sales. This, this is kind of a on-and-off issue in Murphy's, is that businesses move display racks or sales racks out onto the sidewalk and end up narrowing and narrowing.
Right, right.
So, can we say, oh, shall not approach upon pregnant driveways, pedestrian walkways, okay. I was just looking for sidewalk.
Okay.
That's good. All right.
Y'all good? Special events.
Hmm.
That's a deep second.
I might be interested in this one.
We're gonna be coming back.
Right.
That, that is such a big topic that we're, that I don't think most of the changes are anticipated to be right now.
The one...
This is, we're just getting a...
The one thing I think needs to be moved over is the definition of special event really is now listed under temporary uses requiring an administrative use permit. It lists special events, but that's really where the definition is. You don't find organized... You don't find organized activities, assembly, or events to which the public invited, is invited to watch, listen, or participate, et cetera, et cetera. That needs to be either in seventeen point one two, point one seven oh or in the, the list of uses or definitions at the back of this unit. It, it, it.
Bless you.
We talk about user friendly. When you come across something for special events here, uh, you don't look for it under a list of things that were, it might require an administrative use permit. So I think the definition needs to be either.
Yeah.
Up front or back. Okay, I can stop talking?
I hear you, yeah. Um, I think aside from that, and maybe this is, um, you all know this. I don't know if Julie or Gina kind of want to like tee up what we're really doing with it. Really, the idea is we know you're having kind of separate conversations and looking at special events holistically and comprehensively. This is really intended to carry forward the existing with revisions just to make it fit in with the updated code um, with the understanding that we think further revisions will happen through that, um, separate effort.
Yeah, I think the staff report to the board of supervisors when we have a final draft will make clear those things that are going to be coming back as standalone, as separate standalone ordinances for further review later.
Then a few nitpicking things. A1, A1 and AP zone have a provision A sub one. Special events are allowed as an accessory used to a bona fide onsite agricultural operation. Is that a term of art that's known? Or should we say primary agricultural use or something like that? That's. If we're worried about the word objectionable, I think bona fides are bona fide. Say it.
Um, we can certainly change that.
You don't think my miracles would count?
Well, and that's, that's really the problem that we've had. Not entirely.
Maybe go through the.
Yeah, so, um, so what we did change was, um, there is a current, currently in code, there's a reference to the, um, up to twelve special events held in one calendar year as a permitted use. Um, so, so the requirements that you see currently enumerated under A1 and AP, um, under A1, says where is allowed, A1 and AP, up to twelve special events may be held in one calendar year as permitted. Thirteen to twenty-four special events held during calendar year requires administrative use permit and so on. That reference was, um, was also enumerated in RA and RR, I believe. No, RR actually was, you need a permit regardless. Um, so with the understanding that when this section of code was actually drafted, um, and, and the inclusion of, as an accessory used to a bona fide ag operation was also included. Because when, when initially, when that section of code was drafted um, by the appointed committee at the time, um, the intent was to allow for these accessory uses um, in agricultural operations to, um, to provide additional income um, for those ag operations. And so, um, what's happening is because we didn't tie them back to, um, an agricultural use and because we just allowed them without a permit of some sort kind of in other zones, it started to become an issue where individual people are now wanting to just solely operate their, their property as a special event venue rather than a venue that is, uh, you know, a, a, a use associated with your agricultural use, which was really the, the primary and the initial intent. So without like making huge modifications to this because we all know that it needs a lot of work, but we just, this is just not the appropriate time to, to do that. We, we eliminated the RA zone from the allowed, um, twelve special events allowed as a permitted use. We don't really have any way to, to kind of regulate that. I mean, you don't know how many events people are really having, but understanding that we want them tied to an agricultural operation, it makes sense to allow them in our prime ag zones, which are, um, you know, A1 and AP, but not necessarily RA because residential ag is seen as that, that equal emphasis on smaller, personal-sized agricultural operations in conjunction with a residence. So, um, so we eliminated that under RA and, um, basically required a, require a permit of some sort, whether it's a TUP or an AUP or a CUP for all those other zones. Um, and then we, and then we added the event center definition. So if you didn't fall into the, the category as described here as a special event because they all are associated or they're accessory to, um, to, um, another use primarily a residence. So if you're in, if you're in a rural residential zone, it's a residential use is a primary use of a rural, of a rural residential zone. Um, so you would have to actually have, um, you would actually have to live onsite and then, um, apply for the necessary permit. But if you are just a standalone event, you know, facility that didn't, wasn't associated with a residence because we know there are a desire for those types of facilities, then we created another definition, which was the event center. And we kind of strategically placed that in, um, in zones that were not residential and subject to a use permit.
For some people, that's, this would be quite a change from the current, their current practice and what they're currently permitted.
Um, RA would be the only one that would really be affected. Um, and the fact that currently, like I said, some of those, some of those facilities are not tied to an ag operation, which again was the original intent. Um, and with the understanding that A1 and AP are our prime ag zones, um, it only makes sense that you're not going to allow a commercial facility on its own without an ag operation. So they really need to be hand in hand.
Yeah, but I guess.
But.
We're, we're saying two things. Wait until after this and we'll fine tune this, but we're making some rather major changes right now.
I guess I, I guess I don't see them as major because anyone that's currently permitted.
They still can ask under the other.
Right.
Uh-huh.
Right.
Okay.
So the only real main, main change is that they are in the A1 and AP zone, they are tied to an ag operation.
Do you want to say commercial ag operation?
Sure.
If we have a definition for ag operation.
That's Tim's, something other than bona fide onsite.
And we can, uh, use. As an accessory used to a commercial onsite agricultural operation. We want the word primary though.
Yeah, primary agricultural use.
Okay.
So in other zones, that special event doesn't need to be tied to the primary agriculture.
No, so understanding that those are residential zones like RR.
Or C.
Or even, yeah. So, um, you just have to have the established primary use. So if you're in a residential zone, you would have to actually have a residence there. So you couldn't take, that would prevent, uh, someone from taking a vacant piece of residential property and turning it into a, a special event center.
But then we are, it's your understanding that under, under A1 here that we're provisions A sub one, that all special events on A1 and AP zones have to have some sort of agricultural theme?
Yeah, so they have to be in agriculture production. That has to be the main, the primary use of the property.
The, the main use of the property. But what if they want to do weddings?
They, they can go ahead through the appropriate permitting process. So if they wanted to have an undetermined amount of weddings or in this case twenty-four special events, well, weddings probably isn't the best.
I, I'm just.
I, I think the question is that original intention was that those events were related to their agricultural operation.
Right, right.
Like fall harvest.
Fall harvest, right.
But now, of course, people want to have weddings out there um, or whatever, some other.
Right.
Event and so I think Tim's asking, when we give them the, your permit at up to twelve or then thirteen to twenty-four, more than twenty-four, all of those events don't have to be an agricultural themed event.
The events themselves.
The event itself.
Well, so the current definition of, of special event actually doesn't, uh, um, it precludes us from allowing those private events.
Well, no, we understand.
That's a whole nother.
Right.
Right, the public.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's, that's a major issue. But, but what we're talking about is, are we, when we say it's accessory used to say a primary agricultural use, then can somebody, is, would weddings be an accessory used to the primary agricultural?
Not by current code.
Excuse me?
No. Because a wedding is a private event.
No, 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 okay, that's a wrong, wrong example. Let's take weddings out of it, but.
Rock concert, rock concert.
Yeah, rock concert, uh, uh.
Anniversary party.
Yeah, car show, et cetera.
Yeah.
They, to be an accessory used to a primary agricultural use.
Right. Because we don't define, we don't, we don't specifically define the theme of the specific event.
The accessory use does not need to be related to agriculture.
It does not, it does not indicate so currently and we didn't include that.
I think there's a definition of accessory use in the writing. I thought there was a, I thought I saw a definition.
No, what he's saying is, does the event as, 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 as an accessory used to the primary agricultural operation, does it have to be agriculturally themed, so?
But I thought the definition, I, I just would like to know where it is. I thought I saw the definition of accessory use written in a way that might require it to be so themed. I, I just don't remember where that definition is right now.
And that's the question. Yeah, I'm sorry to throw you off by talking about weddings.
Well, and then, and then in all the other zones where you can apply for a permit to have a special event, it's not limited in any way to the theme of the event. So even if these folks wanted to do something different under the same process, they could apply for any event other, but it wouldn't necessarily be one of their twelve by right events.
Here's, here's a definition. At seventeen twelve oh three oh on page fifty-seven of printed material, it says accessory uses that are clearly incidental and customarily associated with the principal use on the site may be allowed.
Would, would you repeat that?
I'm looking at seventeen twelve oh three oh in the new, in the draft zone code. I mean, I could interpret that as saying a car show has nothing to do with growing pumpkins.
Unless if the cars are colored orange.
So, I mean, I think I can clarify in, so this allowance for accessory uses is not intended to be the same accessory as this use of accessory.
No way.
So, um, I think we can clarify that. This is what Gina is, I think, saying. The event doesn't need to be agriculture related, but the event needs to be, uh, you know, secondary to this primary agricultural use.
So we don't want the event to be the primary use of the property.
I understand that.
We want it to clearly be.
But that did sound, I agree with Julie. It does sound like it needs to be related.
So we can clarify that, but those weren't intended to interact that way.
Okay.
And the private public and all the rest of those definitions and whether anybody will be allowed late, you know, one event a year or four events a year or something. The certain nature will all be addressed in this future more detailed or.
I'm sure the whole thing's going to be.
I mean, we, I guess the alternative is we could save it for the board to do the whole thing and leave it as is. But obviously Gina must have.
Well, no, I think it is going to come back to all of us at some point.
Definitely. And I, I think that's probably one of the first things that we need to do upon adoption of this.
We need to get direction from the board.
Right, right.
And then it can come back to us.
It's going to have to be, yeah, you're going to have to have a full study session and, and I'm certain that there's going to be a lot of input from the public and, you know, the business sector and, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and, and that's really why we didn't, you know, we're just trying to kind of reel it in just a, a tad bit to try to still kind of capture the original intent without like gutting the whole thing because obviously that's going to be, um, a topic that is going to be worthy of much more discussion than we have time for. Um, so, I mean, it's entirely up to you. Those were just the, um, the initial changes that we thought of. And, and our opinion is they're very minor. Because right now it just, um, you know, like I said, we're, we're allowing, um, a, a special event to take place on properties without any agricultural operation at all. And I really think there's a danger in, in, in allowing all of our ag land just to be, you know, used for commercial purposes.
Yeah, and, and, and further to that, there's also a danger in allowing twelve free events, period. I, I think there's a danger to that because it opens the door to, oh, well, yeah, I have a permit for twelve events. Next time, next thing they're doing twenty-four, they're doing thirty-six. And our problem in the county is that regardless of how good our intentions are, there are always those elements that will take advantage and we do not have the ability to enforce in a timely fashion. That's the problem.
This is just for our future discussion.
Right.
So I, I think this section actually should just be left alone until we have a, a, a more, uh, better discussion because if we start tweaking things here and there and then we have this full-blown discussion about it, we're going to have to go back and, and, and try to, uh, you know, put some, put certain things back or even go further. If we just leave it the way it is in the existing code without any alterations and then take the existing code intact to this study session with the board and the planning commission and then have a final version of what this section should look like.
Well, I think that would avoid a lot of conversation at this stage.
Absolutely, yes.
If you had the, the heading for special events and then what you've done with some other things saying, for purposes of this, this. other things, saying, for purposes of this co, this amendment, we're not making any changes. Because you are, you are more than tweaking some people's capabilities in the RA zone, say, that they think they currently have. So I, it seems to me to make sense to say, we're putting this off until another time. Not, well, we're making some changes, but most of it we're putting off until another time. Commissioner Parker, what do you think about that?
You mean, just leaving it the way it is right now?
Right.
And, and not making the change that, here, here's the thing. The reason why she's doing this is because there are a lot of complaints, I believe, from people having events in too small of an area where they affect a large amount of people. I know about this, because I have an event, you know, I have, I am ag and I also do events. And I can tell you that I wouldn't want to be next door to me if I was on a five acre parcel.
Yeah.
I'm not.
Yeah.
I'm on 200 and, or 312 acres, and I'm in the middle. I don't affect my neighbors. In 13 years, I haven't had a single complaint. But if you're in a RA, or what is it, RA we're talking there?
RA.
Or any, any residential, you're talking about a much smaller parcel of land that affects many, many people. And so I agree, and I'm not, I'm going kind of away from doing weddings, so I'm not trying to keep out the competition at all, because there's plenty of room. There's weddings every day. But they do affect your neighbors, they positively do. And so it is something that needs to be looked at very closely. My situation is really unique, because I don't bother people, and I'm really respectful to my neighbors. I turn music off. A lot of people don't. Is that why we're addressing this right now, Gina? Because it really is weddings. They're loud and people complain about them. I don't blame them.
Yeah, so, you know, obviously, it's, it's become an issue on smaller parcels.
Yeah.
Presumably on, on parcels zoned A1 and AP, obviously, because you can't even have AP unless you've got a minimum 100 acres. And it has to be in agriculture, because it's associated with the Williams Act contract. So, so in, in that respect, I think it was just our attempt to kind of head off some of the, some of the known problems. And, and again, we didn't think it was that significant, because it really affects just the one zone district. Because right now, in RR, you have to get an administrative use permit anyway. So you can't, you don't have the allowance of up to 12 or 24, you know, so on and so on. So you have to get at least a minimum of an AUP. So the RA zone is really the one that's being affected. And then tying it back to, you know, primary agricultural operation, again, was the, was the main intent when the zone was, or when this section was originally written.
Well, I don't disagree with what you're doing.
Yeah.
It's whether this is the time to do it, or just carry over it. Have you had much reaction from RA people, all this is?
You know, it comes up all the time, you know, we have to.
I mean, excuse me, reaction to this proposal from RA?
No, and, you know, and it's hard, because we've reached out to the community in multiple different ways, whether they're flyers or posting notices on the website, and putting things up in each community, sending out specific notices to people that their zoning is changing. I mean, we've made such a tremendous effort to try to get people involved in the process, and, and the fact of the matter is, is they're just not participating. Now, I suppose, I suppose, if you specifically were targeting a, one subject, like special events, that the word would probably spread a lot faster than, oh, the county's doing a comprehensive zoning update, you know? That sounds really boring to most people, and probably, probably really, you know, too, too labor intensive for anyone to really want to dive into it. So, I mean, I can understand your, your concern in that respect, so, you know, it's entirely up to you. If you think that we've, you know, don't really need to make those changes now, just from a department standpoint, we know what we deal with on a daily basis, and I think we're just trying to kind of, just incrementally trying to head off some of those issues that we keep having.
Well, in part.
But.
If we do what you, what you suggest we do at this stage.
Yeah.
It will prompt further response.
But we also have to remember that if you're a lawful business.
You can continue it.
You can continue that. But, you know, the, the fact of the matter is, is that I would say the majority of, of people that are operating this kind of business in the county are not an actual lawful business at this point. They don't have business licenses, they haven't gotten their necessary permits, they're just operating. And I, you can't, what are you gonna do? You can't protect people from themselves. I mean, they're, if, if you're, if you're, if you're an illegal, you know, operating facility, then that's, you're an illegal facility, and I don't know what else to tell you. So the, changing the zoning code isn't gonna protect you from, you know, what you've already done, and we're not gonna continue to allow, even if we didn't change it, we're not gonna consider them to be a lawful business unless they've gone through all their permitting.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I don't disagree. However, we don't know what the intent of the board is going to be. We can make this change and they go, no, we want to put it back the way it was, or we want to go even further. So, yeah, we, we have these concerns, but if we have made a decision that we're going to look at this in a more holistic fashion at a later time, then let's just leave the existing code intact, and then, and then do those things that are going to be done at that time. If we do this, and the board goes, why take out the RA, for whatever reason, then we're gonna be, we're gonna have to reverse whatever decisions that were, the steps we've made, and we spent an exhaustive amount of time going over it. So I would just say, let's skip it, and, and take a look at it at the time when we want to take a good look. And I, you know, again, you know, Gina knows this, that I personally have issues, we've talked about this several times, but with the knowledge that this is a, going into this, this is going to be a controversial section, we were gonna deliberately take this out of any review process at this time, then I think we should just, you know, honor that and, and do it at, at, at that time.
Well, I think that would make it very, a lot clearer. Actually, I, I see, I'm, I'm divided in my, in what, the way I feel, I'd be interested in the other commissioners' views on whether we should just leave it alone at the current statute.
I, I, I personally, I think we can leave it alone, or I, I'm open to both.
Yes, I know.
Because I do know how it affects. There's, there's a lot of people that are pretty well irritated by all the weddings that are going on.
Yeah.
And it really boils down to weddings primarily.
Yeah. And, and weddings, of course, are not open to the public, so they're not a special event.
Yeah, under the current law.
I have a new comment question. What district is primarily affected by this?
RA. So it's that half residential, half agriculture that they have a.
What zone?
You say district.
Uh, residential agriculture is a resource zone. Primarily, it's anywhere from five acre to 20 acre parcels, generally speaking.
And is there one?
It's countywide.
It's countywide?
Yes, yes.
It's countywide, yes.
Right.
And the biggest beef, it appears, is weddings.
Well, special.
It's the location of weddings.
Right.
In the proximity of where the party's being held to other residences.
But it's not just weddings. I mean, we've got, we've got special events such as summer concerts, and they attract, you know, hundreds of people that are just rolling onto vacant pieces of property with no infrastructure at all. So there's no consideration for parking and restroom facilities and safe access. So there's just a wide variety of issues, and because of the way the code is written, it allows them up to 12 unpermitted, basically, or permitted, I should say, with no other, with no other permit requirements, for us to actually address, you know, things like safety concerns and access and, and whatnot, you know? And, and especially when you're dealing with large congregations of people, you know, emergency access is a huge issue, you know? How do you get there? A lot of our roads are very substandard roads in this county. So, I mean, there's a wide range of issues. And amongst them, you know, residential, on, on smaller residential parcels, you know, you think that you're on a big acre, you know, a big parcel of land, five acres is not really much, when you're talking about the numbers of people that you're allowing on your property. And you've got other residences that are in close, close proximity, and it's becoming a nuisance. So it's, you know, increased traffic generation, increased noise, and, and it's becoming a real issue, and we don't really have any way right now to tell people, no, that's not an appropriate site, because the code is just kind of allowed.
But, but with this, they could still apply for a permit.
They could still apply.
And they can get conditioned, we're not taking it away from them.
So we're not taking it away, we're just requiring, oh, Michelle.
It's supposed to be off.
Question, answer, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it seems to me, I mean, we, we talk as if, well, we're gonna do this now, and then we'll get to special events, you know? But that's probably at least a year away before that would get resolved.
I would.
I, I wouldn't.
Logically, I would probably agree.
I wouldn't say that, because even this process, as, as we are talking about it today, planning commission makes a recommendation to the board of supervisors, because it's a code amendment. So the decisions made at this level are not even final. So it's gonna get to a hearing before the board, and some of these issues might be brought up. I just don't see, time-wise, I don't see the advantage, because, you know, of, of being able to rectify the existing concerns with the immediacy of actually doing a more robust focused look. It's already on the calendar, it's already, you know, it's, we just need to finish this process, and then we can address that particular issue.
I am, I'm just concerned that when it goes to the board, that because it's so controversial, we're already having trouble with it, that it could slow down the rest of the zone. I mean, that's, that's my, you know, it's a policy call, for sure.
Then let's not tweak it, let's leave it alone.
Well, I think we can do it just the way they presented it to us, with whatever minor things. I think making the, this, we want to call it a tweak, but, but requiring people to get a permit, some of them are just a temporary use permit for one time, this is not a major thing to do. So if somebody on their RA parcel just has to have one wedding.
Or a craft fair.
Or a craft fair.
Yeah, let's, let's take weddings out.
They, well, whatever it is, they, yeah, weddings is, because, until we look at the definitions. That's a different thing. But that, there's still the opportunity for them to get permission to do something, so.
Hold on.
So if somebody wants to have.
Just to frame up what the, you know, proposed changes were, because I, I know there's that question of, well, if we're doing this big thing later, maybe we just carry forward what we have existing. So in red line and strikeout, I put in what, if you said, carry forward the existing, what would that look like? And so basically, there's two things that we tried to accomplish with the revisions we made. One was intended to clarify the original intent of special events, was that these were supposed to be not primary uses, that these were, you were supposed to have a separate primary use, and that these things were kind of secondary. Your code says nothing about that now. So it basically would say, in all zones, special events are allowed, and you need these permits. So the first one was to clear, was intended to clarify the original intent. It wasn't to, you know, change anything. The second was with the RA thing, was really in response to, I think, what Gina's talking about, a public health and safety kind of thing, and on these properties, you know, it was difficult to get the, what was felt as the necessary oversight to ensure that there's safe access, and, you know, it's not a nuisance. And you're right, it doesn't mean that in RA, you can't have special events, it's just you wouldn't be given this kind of freebie. You would instead be, kind of, right away, put into whether, depending on what you're doing, either a temporary use permit, administrative use permit, or conditional use permit. And again, it wasn't intended to take away an allowance, it was intended to enable the county to have that opportunity to look at something for potential life and safety concerns. So I just want to characterize what those, why we thought those revisions may be okay as part of this versus a collective look at it. Again, you don't have to do that, I just wanted to show then what that would look like if you, if your direction would be just simply carry forward the existing.
Well, I've, I've, I think I finally, with the help of the chair's astute comments, I've come around to, that there are things we need to remedy now, and that, I think there will be quite a delay before there is a final determination of all the special event procedures. And since we have concerns now that need to be addressed, that I, I, I'm, I'm in favor of taking the approach that you have taken, that the staff and Martha has taken.
With the, with the, with the new definition for event center, we kind of felt like that was kind of opening another door for those facilities that are truly just event centers, and that they didn't want to be subject to, you know, the other, the other requirements, like, you know, being an accessory to an ag use, or, you know, having to get all these other permits, or have a residence on site. So, you know, we kind of thought that that was another, another door that we opened up for people as an option, that, and then, of course, we placed those in what we thought were appropriate zones.
So there is something that is designated event center?
Yeah, so we came up with a new definition for event center, and we, and we placed that in, in certain zone districts, not residential. You can get back.
Where would I find that?
Um, that would be under the.
Page?
Yeah, so we'll enumerate those in the, in the use tables. And the event center should be a commercial use, yeah, it's a commercial use. Right now, we're saying it's a conditional use allowed in general forest in A1. And then we.
Conditional use in all commercial zones.
Yeah.
And conditional use in rec.
So that gives the county some discretion, you know? Depending on, we can look at those life safety kinds of issues, you know, appropriate size for the proposed use, access, things like that.
But didn't you, didn't you say it was commercial in A1?
It would be a, yeah, so in A1 and general forest and all the commercial zones with a conditional use permit.
Oh, got you.
Right, and so you don't have that, oh, it's tied to a residence, or it's tied to a bona fide ag operation. These are just facilities that are run commercially as an event center.
Okay.
Either in a zone where they're not likely to cause a problem, or where there's a lot of space, like you were talking about.
So we, we've not allowed them intentionally in any of the residential zones.
I have one just wording suggestion, under the special event. So A, under A2, other zones, there's just a verb missing. In all zones other than A1 and AP, special events are allowed?
Yep.
Thank you.
I just have to say one more thing, which is, I don't expect us to do anything about today. This is just for our long-term comeback and look at the special events, is that we get so fixated on the whole residential stuff, and we do have, I think, some clarifications needed for the commercial zones, and whether businesses are allowed to have a parking lot sale, or put vendors in their parking lots, and how does that affect the, the parking, or spilling out onto the sidewalk, or that kind of stuff.
That kind of stuff. Long-term, are they allowed to buy right, can, you know, when do they need a special event permit? Is it when they have light music and they have a bunch of people there, what is it? But I don't expect anything about that today.
Yeah.
I was going to say that uh we should keep our personal rotations intact. Let, let the county uh Board Supervisor.
Yeah.
Do what they can do and then we can come back in one fell swoop.
Right.
And incorporate those thoughts we have along with the county's, one of the boards, uh, and then be able to.
Their direction on.
Exactly.
There's a lot of thought. A lot of thoughts that will be.
I agree, so I feel like I am ready, I, I'm comfortable saying to accept the suggestions from the staffing county and expect to come back to this and have lots of discussion.
Oh, yes.
Yep.
In agreement?
Public comment?
Sure.
Okay, um, good discussion, uh, I hope the board brings this up sooner than the next year. Um, or sometime within the next year because of the challenges we've had. Good call Gina, thank you for reminding us that in the AP, on ag preserves, there are Williams net contracts that limit the kind of things you can do.
Right.
They have to be accessory, they have to be related to agriculture.
Right.
So, and then the final thing I wanted to say, I just want to, if, if, on page 78, I, I would ask you to consider adding one word to permit denial 1B, where you say the time and duration of the use of amplified sound. And I would, and you're right, the time of the sound, if it's 2:00 AM, it's a problem. The duration of the sound, if it's, you know, starts at 10:00 AM and it goes on for 12 hours, it's a problem. The other thing that's a problem that people often miss is the frequency of the use of amplified sound. And what I mean by that is if you're allowed 24 events and you do those 24 events every weekend for 24 weekends, it can drive your neighbors nuts. Um, so I would hope that you'd consider frequency uh of, of the amplified sound use uh as, as well when you're conditioning projects and when you're, you know, if you're considering denial of a, of a permit. So it would say the time, duration and frequency of the use of amplified sound.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
How do you guys feel?
Yeah, I feel.
So what do you limit the, the?
They, they have to get a permit to, they're doing 24 events anyway, so.
Well, I have this one, one thing that may be a deal breaker here under.
Well, often, often when I see, neighbors are incredibly resilient. And if you can tell them, I'm going to have these events three weeks of the month, but the last weekend of the month, I'm not going to have them. You know, they're like, okay, I could live with that, but if there's going to be 24 in a row, it's kind of like, uh, no. There's, there's no hope, there's nothing to look forward to, right? There's no time when I can use my backyard. So sometimes just giving people, you know, dividing up the quiet or dividing up the noise, you know, almost like you uh do visiting rights for children in a divorce, sometimes giving that, you know, chance for people to have, okay, one day, one month a week, I'll get to use my backyard the way I want to use it, you know, sometimes that works out.
Tim, was there something?
Oh, yes, I, that's, I, I hate to really bring this up, but subdivision G, reoccurring and historical events, reoccurring community events. It should be recurring.
Yeah.
Take out, take out the O and the first C, reoccurring is every.
You just really shouldn't let us look too long.
Yeah.
We'll start.
Recurring is, is a repeated.
I hear Kelly speaking.
Yes, I, I feel a certain heritage.
And it's funny, like, I didn't read it when I read it, but the minute you said, look at G, I'm like, oh, that's the wrong word. I'm done.
Okay. Good.
Okay.
Is there any chance of a bathroom break?
Yes, absolutely, in fact, what? Well, what do we want to do about lunch today, guys? I, we're going to get a bathroom break anyway, but maybe we'll wait and do lunch a little bit later and have a short afternoon.
Yeah, we would love.
You want to wait and have lunch later?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, or would you rather have, just go ahead and take a lunch break now?
I think that makes.
Well, I've been here since seven o'clock and all I've had is a smoothie, so I'm in favor of going to lunch.
Okay.
Then let's, let's take lunch break now and be back at 12:30.
Can't say we don't listen.
That is a 55-minute break.
Well, you were getting a breaker and standing dead on during my tenure.
Sounds good.
All right.
Welcome back to lunch and I believe we are on page 81 and ready to talk about single room occupancy, which I assume has many state requirements.
I'd like to raise kind of a general question, it's, my feeling is, is that on, on any of these sections when we say that begin with single room occupancy, SROs, I'd like to put in a site C section 12, 13 point, 12, I mean, 17 point, 13 point, oh, one, oh, two, oh. Anyhow, back to the use classification sections. Um, just to, just to show people who are maybe just came, are just interested in single room occupancy, they look it up and here it is. Uh, we give them a reference to where it's defined.
To the definition.
Yeah.
Um, so are, are you suggesting that we do that obviously for all of them?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm looking at Martha, she's the, she's the, she's the typer.
She's the doctor.
Yeah.
Sure, Martha will do it.
When, the, the. Let's see, what was it, the, this code analysis memo that you gave us beforehand was really, and which, does, do you have this yet?
He does.
It's very good as far as giving an idea, just what are we doing with zoning? And it's, one of its main features is that zoning needs to be user-friendly and I think doing something like.
That's what we're attempting to do.
On that um topic, it could say a single room occupancy as defined in, but also single room occupancy could be hyperlinked to the definition for the online version.
Great idea.
That's what I would really say, and I, preferences on the one hand are helpful, but then also on the other hand, like too much of them and also kind of putting in the section numbers and all that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would really um steer you towards having the hyperlinks in there and that, I don't know what code publishing kind of thing you have now, but typically that's a, a pretty easy thing and they'll hyperlink every time that term comes up.
Okay.
That's perfect, because I use the munich code version anyway, I don't even own printed stuff anymore, so.
Yeah.
And then the munich code version does have.
There are, they. If there are hyperlinks built in, they're there.
And that's not only helpful to the, to the public, but that's extremely helpful.
Extremely helpful to those of us who barely know what something is, but don't.
Well, especially as we're not really familiar with it yet, you know, um, I mean, how many times have I looked at this thing and I'm still going, oh, where was it? I think we have it somewhere.
Okay, well, that, that'd be friendly, because I would guess that there aren't very, very many people that are going to look at the hard copy.
Exactly.
It's not like the old days where you had, you know, 20 underneath the counter.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For sale.
Eat up copies of them with the corners all.
And replacement pages.
Yeah.
Single room occupancy. Is there anything, anybody would like to comment on?
Yeah, um, under F, um, full kitchen includes a sink, a refrigerator and a stove, range top or oven. It seems to me that uh, it should be stove or a range top and oven.
I don't think they have to provide them.
Well, no, it don't happen, we're, we're just talking, talking what a full kitchen is, no, later on it talks about where a full kitchen. But this is may contain partial or full, I mean, if I, if somebody were, were selling me a condo and I bought it sight unseen and I walked in and all that was in the kitchen wasn't.
I see what you're saying. It's just telling you what would be considered a full kitchen, okay.
Do, do we want to have uh hot and cold water uh in that definition of full kitchen?
Says not required.
I don't think that's necessary, I think that may be a building code thing or.
Yeah. I, I don't think you need to say.
Then, but then we do get down to the requirements, if a full kitchen is not provided, common kitchen facilities shall be provided with at least one full kitchen per floor, it seems to me you want to have with one full kitchen for every blank number of units and at least one full kitchen per floor. I mean, I'm picturing something that hasn't existed in Calaveras County and maybe never will. But you don't want to have 20 units depending on one kitchen.
I'm, I'm chair, um, in, in, in places where I have seen them, they usually have been maybe um motels that were converted to SROs. So that is probably why at most motels don't typically have kitchens in them.
Sure.
So having a kitchen per floor is actually a step up from when you, when you're taking an existing uh use and, and converting it into an SRO. So that's probably why that language is in there.
Yeah, but if, if we did have a housing project uh that is huge, um, why then, if, if a floor had 20 units, um, you probably want to have more than one kitchen.
Probably.
Martha, is this, um, is this something that we can modify the language or?
Yeah, I just need to look back at if there's any um limitations and from the state of what we can do, but then we can play around with it, yeah.
Okay, okay, yeah.
I, I agree that it'd be better to have per number of units, but whatever you guys come up with.
And I don't know if there's anywhere a definition that director means planning director, but we can add the word planning there under I two right at the bottom.
What?
Review and approval by the director.
So you wanted to reference planning director?
Yeah, I'm not sure that that's.
I don't know if it's necessary or not.
Well, I'm not sure that the planning director is the person who would be most familiar with the management plan and operation rental procedures.
So there is, there will be a kind of blanket interpretation that anytime this uh code refers to director, it is the planning director.
Good.
We can al, we can also put in planning director, that's fine. Um, I would keep, to the last point, I would keep it as planning director because the planning director is the one that administers this code. They may do that in consultate, you know, they may reach out to others for their okay and then, and then just do the sign off based on that, but.
That makes sense. I didn't know SROs were limited to 30 days. Is that a state requirement?
That, let me, uh, we'll check on that and follow up on that, um, so I need to um, yeah, I need to compare with your housing element and the state classification. So let me note that and verify.
Yeah, I guess if, if it isn't required, I don't see where we should require it.
Right.
Me too.
Okay.
We just have people moving from one to the one next door.
If, if they could find one next door, right.
Right, right, okay, I'll check on that.
Anything else? All right, then let's talk about telecommunications facilities.
So, and you'll be able to tell Martha and Gina, uh, whenever we get to a term that is defined, um, that you can put the hyperlink in for like telecommunications facility, well telecommunications, I guess, is defined.
Yes, I have an email in just now to um the board clerk who I think is the one who manages, I could be wrong with them. Munich code contract is to make sure that they have that, so.
They have hyperlinks, I know.
In munich code?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We some.
It also went, every time I open it, I don't know, maybe because I'm a subscriber to it, it tells me what's changed.
Like, and so any updates and I can quickly look at them, has hyperlinks to those changes.
But we, we would need to tell them what terms we, we need to be hyperlink.
We can work that out, obviously. Telecommunication facilities?
Yeah, uh, under, under paragraph, what is it, A6 and little two and little three, we just need to have a, make it a complete sentence by saying like in two, a satellite dish is permitted, that is greater than, and under three, an antenna is permitted, that is noted. Because we're saying it's subject to the following restrictions under six and by itself, it doesn't make sense. Oh, and I guess down there under B2, also a satellite dish is permitted, that is greater. No, and it keeps going, three and four, same thing. I mean, otherwise it's just stating a subject, but there's no.
Um, it, it's kind of related to the following accessory facility. It, this is a list of what's exempt.
Right, it says.
So what's exempt is a single, say, ground mounted, receive only radio or television antenna that, you know, doesn't exceed the height and does not exceed one meter.
Well, but I mean, if we look at under B1, well, we have a satellite dish that does not exceed two meters in diameter, is permitted anywhere, blah, blah, blah.
No, it said, but there are, it says they're exempt at the top in the very first sentence. So they're them from these requirements that are going to follow or.
Okay, well, and then either, I mean, either we do it on all or we do it on none.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'll clean that up.
Just a, when I'm, I'm getting down to uh permit requirements and these co-location. How, how does a cell, an AT, AT&amp;T puts in a cell tower, cell tall tower. Um, and it looks as if we're requiring to take Verizon on also, unless it's going to interfere with the transmission. Being, being a Verizon subscriber uh under an AT&amp;T tower, I think that's a great idea, but I, I don't know that we have the authority.
No, actually, federal regulations does allow us to allow co-location.
To require?
Yes.
Yeah, we've heard it for a long time, not new.
There, there's a federal, increasing federal policy with a bunch of federal preemption that is trying to encourage rapid development of, uh, and expansion of wireless facilities. So that would make sense that they would want as much, as much service as possible.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, single power.
I'm all, I'm all for it, this one, we have the power to do it.
Verizon has to go ask AT&amp;T and then pay them for that.
Yeah.
And again, for all of these state and federal compliance components, we're going to have. And again, for all of these state and federal compliance components, we're going to have, uh, I know Martha's going to have somebody she associates with that's, uh, the law, you know, lawyers, look at this to make sure that they're in compliance with state and federal law.
Okay. There is, under B one, there's the next line from the bottom, the, the word that does not fit.
Where?
Under B one.
Under permit requirements?
Permit requirements. Co-location of new transmission equipment, removal of transmission equipment, or the replacement of transmission equipment is permitted by right, provided the application of an existing tower or base station. You don't need that. Does not substantially change the.
Page eighty-two?
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three.
There's a unnecessary gap between station and that.
Oh, okay, yes.
Well put.
Yes, there you go.
Thank you.
So I just want to make sure that we talked about some high requirements that the wording was odd when we were looking at the zones. Like, there, there was a place where towers said they couldn't be more than ten feet taller than, but we know that there are towers that are much taller than that. I just want to make sure that we coordinate that before we finish this all up.
So, yeah, that was on page, what, eighty-five?
Yep.
Height, heights requirements?
Well, it's, it's not so much this as just that.
The tables?
The tables. We had some funny places in the tables back when we were looking at.
As far as where they're allowed?
Yes, when, when we, and then it would, there would be a description that would say, so long as it's not more than, but it would be substantially lower than what we know already exists. And that is
Was that a footnote?
More typical. I can't remember exactly. I'm sure I have notes. I mean, maybe some of you guys have already looked at.
I see telecommu- under land use regulations, public and semi-private has tele, telecommunications, but I don't see the, uh, height. I, I, I seem to remember.
Do you remember that conversation? I, it was, it was wording that was like this many feet higher than the tallest.
I thought it was under the height because I have a note. Says too restrictive. Most towers are eighty feet plus.
That's it. So.
And it's under, it's, it's under the height requirements three.
What page?
Eighty-three, eighty-five, excuse me. That's where I wrote the note. So it.
Well, that's probably because you were smart enough to look ahead and go. But it was when we were looking at the zoning.
Right, so you fold. See, I have it marked as well.
Gina, which one is too restrictive?
Well, it looks like it.
Um, so this, this first one.
It's this similar language though, and so might not be.
So the, so the, um, so under the, um, height requirements, um, I think the one that was most was the building mounted facilities? And, and facilities mounted on structures?
Well, I don't think we were so concerned about things mounted on structures.
See fifteen feet above the height limit of the zone and fifteen feet above the existing height of the legally established building.
The way I read these provisions on eighty-five was that we didn't have anything about maximum height. I mean, we have the minimum functional height of freestanding antennas.
I think that's probably okay.
And, yeah, but that's, that's fine, but maybe we should have something about maximum height. As I recall, we're not allowing any that would require a flashing red light on the top because of the aviation.
Yeah, I think that height limit is set at ninety feet.
So I, I think it might be a good idea to, unless there's some indication that there, we should be allowing it higher, I think that might be a, a good thing to codify.
So codify the maximum height of telecommunications facilities as ninety feet.
If that's, if that's what it is, that, uh, that the federal government, I think, requires a flashing red light above that.
Uh, Mr. Commissioner, the problem is that we do have facilities that are taller than that, uh, than ninety feet. We have some that are hundred and eleven and it seems like they're getting taller and taller. And the reason they're getting taller.
Depends on where they're located.
Yeah, and as soon as they're getting taller, it's this co-location thing because, uh, when you have a carrier, they would want some kind of distance to separate their, their, um, panels and things from the next, from the next, uh, AT&T then Verizon or vice versa. So they are coming in taller and taller, but, uh, to have that red beam, uh, the F, um, FCC regulations require that the red beam is not required if it's le- if it's lower than ninety feet. So anything above that.
Higher than ninety feet.
Yeah, sorry, yeah. Yeah, anything above that.
Okay, well, I, I don't know.
So I have it noted in, under the public and semi-public zones, and I just have asterisks and things circled and maximum height by CUP and so obviously we were discussing.
Yeah.
Discussing it. That twenty-four feet was not tall enough.
No, no, we did discuss that, yes, and, and especially in an OS zone.
So, so we don't want to get into any maximum height?
Um, you don't need to, so any freestanding like kind of new thing is going to require CUP, so you could look at the height through that. So if you did not have a maximum height established, I think it would still be fine considering.
It will be reviewed.
E.
And it, I mean, we state, I mean, at the beginning of, of number three, it's the maximum height shall be that of the zoning district in which the telecommunications facility is located. But that gets us back to the tables and I don't.
It said twenty-four feet, maximum height clearly doesn't work.
There's, there's.
Right.
There's where the problem is.
So exactly. So, right, so that would be revised, like struct.
I'm not trying to distract us from the main topic here. Just don't want to lose it.
Uh, well, uh, also it kind of, um, reminds me of, uh, what I wanted to discuss with the commission, which is our height limits in general. Communities that have height limits, especially in residential zones, are communities that are trying to protect a view shed, uh, the ocean, for example. You know, they would, they would, you know, if your, if your house is
Limitations.
is located, uh, in a, you know, that you have a view of the ocean, they want to limit your height so that you don't block somebody else's view. In our community though, um, we're not trying to protect any of, any kind of view sheds that I, that I can think of. The other thing to limiting height is that it would not give us the opportunity to, to densify, which means you want to go, uh, want to go vertical, then go horizontal. I mean, we have an opportunity, if we could build a, a six-story, uh, residential housing project, we would have limitations in our current code. We have to come in for all kinds of variances to be able to do that. I think, you know, looking forward in residential zones, unless we have some specific intent for wanting to limit height, uh, it should be left to discretion rather than, rather than limit it to, well, only two stories or thirty-five feet because future development is going to require densification and densification means you have to go up as opposed to spread.
Is there any overlay zone that would be particularly?
Well, typically.
For that because, you know, I, I, we're not talking about views of ocean clearly, but people do prize the view of
Pine trees.
Where the sun is setting over the hills and this sort of thing.
I hope we don't have ordinances where we can go six stories in the country or anything like that.
No.
Well, you know, it would only apply.
It would apply like in a, uh, be like in a specific planned area, like maybe San Andreas downtown, where we want to encourage commerce. We want several hotels perhaps. No, you don't want a hotel that's two stories and thirty feet. They're going to be.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's the intent.
But I think, you know, when you start getting that kind of size and mass, then, you know, you really starts to be out of character with other buildings in the community. But it seems as though time and time again, we keep talking about, um, uh, views and impacts. And I know, Tim, we've had this conversation multiple times through, you know, secret documents over, you know, what, what is actually impacting, um, the site and.
Like the Dollar General, yeah.
Like the Dollar General. And, you know, I, I vaguely recall a youth permit for a church.
The lights are falling off. And Tim is their guy to go to.
That's right.
That's not really funny, I mean. But, okay.
But currently, what, what exceptions are there? Do we have exceptions to our height limits or?
Just the variance. A variance process. But you have to make specific findings, which would be very difficult to make.
Et cetera, et cetera.
Sounds good to me.
Uh, well, you know, if it, if it doesn't fall into that category and, you know, we need to have four stories or five stories, using the variance route for something like that would not be correct, would not be right.
So there are other issues with that because as soon as you get over a three-story building, you start to have other firefighting requirements and a dish, different construction types.
Sure, yeah.
So I don't think that Calaveras County
Can necessarily has the infrastructure supported, yeah.
Cost effective to the developers.
Cause you think of all of our fire districts, they're all volunteer districts, you know, they're working on a shoestring budget. And so, um, you know, for them to all of a sudden have to go out and buy these huge, you know, ladder trucks and all this other equipment just to be able to fight fires is going to be, you know, a, a financial burden.
Well, that's why the variance thing would still allow a developer who thought it was worthwhile for him to make his plea for it. And there would be an opportunity for the fire districts to comment on it.
Right, right.
So right now, the multi-family is forty-six feet, so it's already taller than the single family. You know, is that the right exact number? I don't.
Does that allow for three-story?
Yeah, that allows for three stories. And building heights are figured by the average of the perimeter. It's complicated.
Yeah, when, when you have hillsides to consider.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, so it kind of makes up that hillside thing.
How about in the commercial zones though? That is where we might have.
Forty-five feet?
The likelihood of, of getting something that might be taller.
I, I don't think it's very likely that we would get something more than three stories being built here. Oh, the copper has some buildings that are.
Well, they're pretty much two stories. I don't think they're, they're going up that high, but.
Yeah.
Again, I mean, I think you need to stop and consider what do we want Calaveras County to look like. Um, you know, I, I think we pride ourselves on, you know, on our rule. Um, you know, characteristics of our community and the historic districts and.
If you read the community plans, like almost always a.
Right, right. And that's exactly where all of our commercial zone is located is within each one of our community plan areas. And if they're, it, if they're further dictating, you know, maintain a rural character of your community and, you know, embrace our historic resources and so on and so on and so on, then we may have to consider.
We could make an accommodation if somebody had a brilliant project that looked, that had a, a feature that was taller than and a reason for it. Even the PV process would allow them to work through that. Just, you know, Bear Valley Lodge is, I forget how many stories, but they have never been able to use their top story because they built it without checking into that. They don't have sufficient firefighting capability. So it's a, it's an empty floor.
Yeah.
Not, not something, we wouldn't want to think that there was no problem by giving people a higher height limitation than we can reasonably actually support. I think it's, it's a good point long-term. I just don't think we're out of space or that property is so valuable that contractors are going to want to do very tall. Very tall in our world.
How is it going to look if you've got six-story building next to single-story structures around your whole street front? I mean, if you think about where the commercial zoning is, it's all up and down along your highways and it's pretty much all developed for the most part.
Right, there's, there's places that you could, I mean, if you look at any of the what used to be little towns on the peninsula and Bay Area, those have all changed over. They were all two and three-story limitations and now they're but that property has become so valuable.
And that's the Bay Area.
Shortage of, uh, there's a shortage of housing and a shortage of commercial space, which we don't have. We have an empty commercial building.
Right, right, right.
So.
Yeah.
You know, but I think the market will tell us when we need to do that. When we start seeing people inquiring about doing. But back to, we were really talking about telecommunications.
Okay, how about, uh, under the co-location, uh, so paragraph seven, A. There's about three lines up from the bottom. It talks about the county may require the applicant to, and do we want to say the director? I mean, the county sounds a little do we want to be more specific than the county? Oh, page eighty-seven.
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-seven, seven, A.
And I was thinking that's okay.
Yeah.
Good. Got it.
Okay.
Having some challenges?
No.
Okay, everyone's wondering.
Well, no, see, I mean, you know, the, 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 we, we, we have one right now that is generating a lot of concerns from neighbors. And in the past, and then Gina, I can attest to this, I think it's was in the, was it in the Valley Springs area?
Yeah, it's in Valley Springs.
Uh, where there was a petition by neighbors to do not allow a, a cell tower to go in. Uh, there's one that I'm currently about to make a decision on that may end up in that same category, which might come before the planning commission. And, uh, they meet all the FCC regulations. People just don't want them in their neighborhood because it's sixty feet away from somebody's, you know, residence. Now, the way this works is that the telecommunications facility, the, the, um, uh, operators, they look for a dead spot, a dead zone in the community. They, they, they put a ring around it and then they look at infrastructure. Where do we have the infrastructure to connect electricity and so on and so forth? And they find a spot. Now, it usually ends up in, within a established residential area. And, you know, they talk to a few property owners, can we get a lea- could you lease us, uh, space on your property? And this guy says, yes, we could assign a lease. Now, then they go through the process. Then we send out notices and then we start getting some feedback. In this particular one, uh, nobody seems to like the facility, even though it's been designed to look like a pine tree. been designed to look like a pine tree.
Somebody, somebody's pine tree.
Quote, 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 quote.
I don't think it's an aesthetics issue with these people, though. I think it's 5G.
Yeah, no, right.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, so I've just kind of given.
People have a problem with 5G.
Is that what it is?
Absolutely.
Okay.
But, but the pine situation, it's Pinus plasticus.
Yes. But it's better than steelers.
It's definitely nicer, I think. I like it.
Yeah, that's right.
AKA bottle brush.
Yes.
It's like bottle brushes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there probably isn't.
It's not an issue with our process or what's in our zoning code.
Yeah.
No.
People don't want 5G in their backyard.
Right, okay.
Okay, temporary uses?
We're limited on what we can make judgments on anyway.
Right, right. And so we're constantly, you know.
Yeah.
Getting Julie's department to weigh in, but it's, 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 it's rather difficult to, to manage. And it has nothing to do with our process. It's just receiving the applications and, you know, there's certain state, federal laws that, you know, regarding timeframe and processing and, yeah, and so.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't have a solution for that right now, but at least nothing that.
Nothing we can write.
I don't know, maybe Julie can try.
I, I, I mean, there are some people in the community who feel very strongly about the electromagnetic waves, and, and we are prohibited federally from considering that.
And we hear from those every time it's close to houses, so, yeah. But there's not anything we can do.
You'll just have to hope that you don't have a good spot.
Yeah, so, so we should move on, cause we probably have the opportunity to talk about this more at length at some future date. Temporary uses.
First problem I have with temporary uses is that, uh, under A, it says temporary uses not requiring a use permit. And then when we get under three C on page ninety, it says a temp, duration, a temporary use permit, use of mobile home or trailer residence shall expire. So this doesn't seem to be.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like it's in the right place.
Doesn't fit in the list.
Or.
I mean, it has, I mean.
Right, yeah, that needs to be corrected.
You see the problem, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, that's great. Then, should we talk about mobile vending on page ninety-one?
I've been waiting all my life to talk about mobile vending.
Again, I, I guess mobile vendors is clear enough without having, meeting a definition.
Ice cream truck?
Well, that's a ice cream truck.
Taco truck?
Yep.
You know, I mean, it, it, cause if, if it's including a taco truck, then when we get to duration under three C, maximum six hours a day per lot. No lot may have a mobile vendor onsite for more than ninety days total in any twelve-month period. We have taco trucks that are there every day.
Yep.
That's, that's gonna create a problem.
But they might have a different kind of permit than a temporary.
Exactly.
Well, right now, there are no, there's no permit process.
So that's a whole nother.
So this is our first shot at it.
And, and just to, to clarify, so this is to qualify for a temporary use permit. You could have them longer or more times or any other duration, but you would have to process an administrative use permit.
Okay.
So that's when you'd get to a temporary use that does not meet those standards for something that could be either exempt or approved under a temporary use permit. So you, you can do mobile vending more or different than this. It's just you would go through a process.
I wonder if we should make that clear somewhere? That, this, this is not the only place where mobile vendors can, they don't have to operate under this sub-paragraph three. They can operate otherwise. Cause I'm, again, if I'm somebody from out of county and I want to have a taco truck and I find this, I think, oh, can't do what I want to do because I can't be there more than ninety days in any twelve-month period. Maybe we should have some indication of, if not a temporary use, where do I go?
Okay.
And we don't have anything for that now. They're just planting themselves, right?
We've been allowing them, um, in zones that permit a restaurant. Um, if they're locating, um, on a vacant piece of property, we're requiring them to at least have an encroachment permit, uh, to ensure that there's an encroachment on and off the property. If they're locating on a developed site, then we're asking for a site plan to ensure that they, um, are not, uh, taking up parking that is otherwise allocated to the businesses on site. Um, so we're, we're just trying to do our, you know, due diligence, just make sure that the, that they're not posing an impact on existing businesses. Um, but, you know, the code is absent any kind of mobile vending regulation, so this is our first attempt at regulating them. And it's really necessary because we've got a lot of requests.
Yeah.
And, um, and, and they're not all like the ice cream truck, which is, you know, moving around town and, and only stopping to sell the, the, you know, the popsicle and then moving on again. Um, you know, as we know, they're stationary and, um, they're wanting to locate in a variety of, of locations, uh, throughout the county. And some have even actually been wanting to just park alongside the road someplace. And so we've prohibited those that want to park along the highway or along the roadway in a road right-of-way. We've prohibit them, um, from, um, residential uses for obviously reas, obvious reasons, but it's been hard and we just, you know, don't really have a good, we're just kind of making it up as we go because, you know, we're not trying to, to prevent them from, you know, we're trying to find an avenue in which we can allow them, but without the regulation, it's just very difficult.
There are some that, um, I know Copplis, as I drive down, uh, down Highway Ford in Stockton, but particularly around Copplis, there've been a couple where the, uh, vending is a trailer, small trailer, and the vehicle's detached. It's the, drop them off there.
Like a kiosk.
Yeah, yeah, just drop them off there and move on. And then you'll find another, another location where they were just dropped off and the vehicle that towed them is gone. Do they fall into this category? Or how would they?
Yes, yes.
They would.
They were mobile, but of course, it's a trailer.
Not on their own.
Right.
Yeah, and so the diced fruit, uh, vendor guys, which I actually frequently.
Okay. So, yeah, those, those would be considered kiosks.
And, and they fall in still, though?
Yes.
Yeah, they should, they should.
But currently, then, these people where you say you've allowed this and not allowed that, how are they coming before you?
They usually come with a business license.
Yeah.
So they have to get a, a permit through environmental management. So EMA will, um, you know, inspect the, the food, the, the mobile food, uh, vending truck, whatever it is, unit. And then, um, and then through that process, um, then they have, the second leg of the process is, is, you know, you have to get a business license. Usually we get some sort of a notification from EMA that says, you know, we've, we've inspected this, uh, mobile food unit and, um, they'll be getting a business license, or we've allowed them to be, you know, here. We've got a pretty good communication.
Basically, when, when we're giving a, a conditional use permit and we're referring to other agencies and they're putting on convention, conditions, this is the business license process.
Well, the business.
They're referring it to you.
Yeah, so the business license process requires, um, certain departments to sign off on the business license. And the planning department is always a sign-off for everything. So everything that requires a business license has got to come before our department. And it's, we basically do equivalent to a zoning clearance. So, you know, we, we look at the, look at the business license, uh, you know, we, like I told you previously, we have a, a questionnaire that we've put together that we require, um, the applicants to complete that provides us with additional information so we can determine whether or not the use is, is permitted, uh, in the zone in which they intend to do the business. So in, but we usually kept them at the business, uh, license stage.
So in, in this, the temporary uses, uh, section, if we just have something in there making it clear that, um, non-tempicular uses are still subject to review of the business license process or something like that.
Or, or we need to create an administrative use permit or something.
I think, right, but for right now.
Yeah.
We don't want to have things in here that would apparently put the box on.
But, but we're not gonna, I don't, I don't know that we're necessarily gonna ask for a business license for a yard sale.
Yeah, okay, well, maybe just put it under mobile vending.
Yeah.
So the things that I'm curious about.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Uh, that if you didn't need a business license for the, the temporary use that requires a temporary use permit, I, I'm, what I'm concerned about is the things that aren't temporary uses, aren't barred from the county because they're not temporary uses. They have some other process to go through.
More than likely, yes.
Yeah, well, I'm, again, I'm thinking taco trucks.
Yeah, well, like I said, the, the mobile vending units have to get not only a county business license, but they have to get a license through EMA, um.
No, but what I'm saying is, there might be some reflection in this section that they're, the world is a broader place than what we're talking about here.
So I.
If you use that language.
Okay.
So do you believe that all the taco trucks and food, local food vendors are getting, doing anything?
Most of the ones, most of the ones out there more recently have gone through a process. Uh, the way I see it is that, um, this particular section would allow for those who, as part of, let's say, um, a celebration in downtown Murphy's, and you want to bring a taco truck over, this would probably be, would regulate them. If we're talking about a standalone facility, uh, that is, you know, you want to operate a business where you want to sell tacos or, or Chinese food for that matter, year-round, and your location is actually a mobile structure, there's a separate process for those, uh, for those types.
What I'm saying is that we ought to recognize that in this section.
Yeah, yeah. Because the one here in San Andreas by the auto parts store is, is, is not, um, is not considered temporary, even though they moved it.
Did you move it?
They move every once in a while, but they're, they're back every day. Yeah.
He's permanent now because he's got a restaurant.
Yes.
But, yeah, my, my question has to do about this, that there's an awful lot of them who just show up on the weekend and just park sometimes at the invitation of a business and sometimes just on their own. And they're just parked in.
Yeah.
In the public right-of-way, in the parking.
We don't necessarily know about those. Now, whether or not they're going through EMA to get any sort of a, you know, I'm, I'm doubting that they are, cause I think the majority of those are probably from out of the county.
Well, the ones I know of that we're seeing at Murphy's do have environmental health.
Okay, yeah.
So ev, everybody knows about them, but a lot of, they're, I don't know.
Cause if you, if you're.
I guess ninety days in any one location is pretty generous.
Yeah, I, yeah. Because, I mean, we don't regulate, the planning department doesn't regulate those that are, say, for instance, going to, um, fairs and other, you know, um, kind of organized events. Um, so if you're, if you're one that's traveling around and, you know, you're, you're vending at the fairgrounds and you're vending at other, other organized events that have already been permitted, then we don't necessarily see those.
But we're getting.
But EMA will go ahead and, and do whatever they do to, to ensure that the unit is, yeah.
I'm thinking the people who just show up on any given.
Right.
Weekend or holiday weekend and are just there.
Who would, who would enforce any type of restrictions on the weekend anyway?
Well, that's the problem. We don't have enforcement, zoning enforcement on the weekends.
Yeah, it would typically be, uh, a code compliance department, but they don't, they don't work on weekends.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I, and I'm not, it's not like I, I want to stop them from doing it. I just foresee that the day may come when it's a bigger problem than it is today.
Right.
You know, usually they're there on bigger weekends, there's business for everybody, but at some point, the restaurants who are paying rent.
Right.
Are gonna get tired of it.
Right.
No, no return.
Yeah, I mean, in, in Murphy's, yeah, we're getting complaints from restaurants in Murphy's that are complaining about vending trucks that are, yeah.
Doesn't belong in this part anyways, just, I think, for our larger discussion at some future date, um, do we need some process that would allow them.
Right.
To be there more permanently.
Last thing I would have on, uh, the temporary uses is what we mentioned earlier, the temporary uses requiring an administrative use permit in special events. As I understand it, uh, there's agreement that we're gonna put this definition of special event somewhere else, so this can be reworded, special events as covered in such and such.
Uh, you mean, uh, page ninety-three, number?
Ninety-three, yeah.
At the top?
At the top.
What did you want that, that?
Well, it's, it's that this is really the only definition we have.
Right, right, right.
And it's, as I understand it, it was agreed this morning that the definition should be somewhere else. So this just needs to be modified to just refer to somewhere else.
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
And, and the temporary uses requiring administrative use permit can, is taken care of right there, too. Okay, anything else on mobile, anything? Wind and solar energy systems.
Well, I have something to distribute here. This has got to be too much to, uh, to dictate.
Let me, let me pass this down to you guys.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, I know.
All the same?
I haven't, oh, yeah, I want one of those back.
I'm not sure you can do this without PG&E's.
Well, that's true.
He might, he might have other people to hand those out to.
It's, it's that if we, oops, here you go. What my concern is, is that we say, uh, this is under the first paragraph, commercial and our wind and solar energy, commercial and energy facilities, including wind arrays and solar farms, used primarily for off-site, uh, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm on the wrong, the first sentence, wind and solar energy system used primarily to reduce onsite consumption of energy, shall be located, blah, blah, blah. Now, this is just broadening a definition of onsite to include adjoining commonly-owned properties. It may not be artfully drafted. I haven't looked at it since I wrote this last night, but, uh.
That's an aggregated system, that's.
Yeah, I mean, PG&E says they permit this.
They do?
Yeah.
Using one system for multiple, it's called an aggregated system.
Yeah, I'm doing one of them. Yeah, yeah.
But it's a special permit.
Yeah, oh, yeah. I mean.
Cause your property is actually multiple, yes.
Multiple APNs.
We, yeah.
And I have multiple meters. And I have multiple meters, I have seven meters.
Yeah.
Cause.
Anyway, it just seems to me that we ought to, PG&E says it permits this, I think it creates problems. And, you know, we, we should not bar this by using the onsite.
Exactly, I, I was gonna say, because if you go, I mean, if, you know, when we talk about, uh, wind, uh, solar farms, if you're not gonna run a solar farm for onsite consumption of energy, you're running a solo farm for energy consumption somewhere else, you know, either by selling it to PG&E or whatever. So, I think onsite consumption is somewhat of a limitation.
And I, I don't know if this is meant to cover solar farms.
Well, it, it, well, if you read, read the definition under seventeen twelve, it says, um, "commercial and/or wind/solar energy facilities, including, uh, used primarily for onsite, for offsite energy consumption are considered public works and utilities," meaning what?
That's a separate use, so, public works and utilities is a use. That's separately regulated. These are just for wind and solar energy systems that if, you know, I put, um, a wind energy structure on my house and it, like, it's helping my well, or, you know, it's helping power my property. Non-commercial. If it's commercial, if it's a solar farm, that's a public work and utility use.
Very good, yeah.
But this, what I'm, what I'm suggesting is just that if you have the, the wind generator on your house and your, your well happens to be over a property line in the next-door parcel that you also own, you shouldn't be barred from doing that by our provision here.
I don't see what you're referring to, but I think probably what could, we could do is Gina and I can look at it and kind of incorporate that, cause I think the intent is still the same, this is not.
Yeah.
Where you're selling energy or, you know what I mean, like, um, yeah, so I.
Yes, so what it says, Martha, is, um, "when adjoining parcels are under common ownership, an energy system of, um, on one parcel used to reduce consumption of energy on one or more of the adj- adjoining parcels shall be deemed to be an onsite for every adjoining parcel to, uh, so served."
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, sounds good.
Turn the page and realize we're at the end of this section.
Yeah.
There's more.
Oh.
There's always more fun.
I wasn't sure if all of your comments on use classifications came out as went through, um.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Or if there were additional ones. I know we talked about a number, we covered a number of them, um, so, I guess, we could, if anybody had any others that we haven't already touched on, we could, um, I can skip there.
There is, yeah, thank you for bringing that up. On page ninety-nine, "schools, comma, private, uh, facilities for primary or secondary education, including private and parochial schools, having curricula comparable to that required in the public schools of the state of California." Um, I don't know if, if this is language that's used by other counties or by the state or whatever, but looking into the curricula of schools, I know, I fully agree with the intention of this, uh, we don't want to have schools that don't teach math, um, or, uh, or science, but of course, there's going to be questions as to what is science, but comparing the curricula, uh, could get kind of dicey. Anybody else concerned with that?
Well, I looked at it and thought, for our purposes, we're just talking about trying to make sure it's an app, a school, not a commercial effort that teaches something or some other, uh, not something that you would consider equivalent to a school, so, for the purposes of limiting where they go, right? So, putting it in a public service, so.
Right.
Primarily. So, I, I agree, who's gonna do that? Who's gonna make that determination, but on the other hand, I think it's, seems appropriate and gets the point across.
It's kind of like the definition of obscenity, you know?
Yeah.
I, I know it when I see it.
We're gonna let Julie take care of all of that.
Is this a school? Well, it looks like a school, and teaches like a school, it must be a school.
Right, I mean, I can't, it, Martha, if this is not something that is somehow required or, or everybody uses it, I'm happy to take a stab at this for the next time and see if there's a way to get us out of the business of comparing curricula, I can, you know, I think there's some people who have what they want to believe is a school, but we might not consider it a school, or they might want some of the benefits of having their use classified as a school, and I can see us getting into unfortunate political issues over.
You might, you might consult with, uh, former commissioner Tremont.
I could, yeah.
I think he'd have some good ideas.
Martha, is this something that you, that like every place uses the same definition?
I don't know that every place uses it, I, I, I use it quite a bit, um, if you have other language that you're comfortable with, we can certainly change it. The idea isn't to say, well, do you provide algebra during freshman year? It's really to be more kind of general, you know, okay, you're not calling yourself a school, but you are, um, you know, it's just dance, and, and you know what I mean? Like, something, kind of how Julie said, you're trying to get, like, the benefits of being called a school, but you're not.
So, let me work on something when I have more time, it's a toughie, and I don't know if I can do any better, but maybe we can work together on, on something.
Sure. Yeah.
My next question is in, on page one oh one, right near the bottom, under the definition of restaurant, they talk about establishments operated and maintained as a bona fide eating place.
It's there, stop bona fide again.
Yeah.
I'm not really eating, I'm just making it look like I'm eating.
Even ABC refers to bona fide.
Yeah, so, in this case, that kind, that is really a term of honor, and it allows the county to point to something, and it is the ABC what your license does.
Yeah, if, if ABC uses it, that's.
Then it's good.
Yeah.
Can I just ask, are we all in agreement that we're, instead of redefining cannabis retailer and cannabis cultivation, we're just gonna leave that to our existing ordinance?
Yes.
Yes.
I have a question on page one oh four, under general retail. Why would we limit hardware storage to those with ten thousand square feet or less of floor area?
That's to distinguish between what building, building material sales are versus a general retail, so if you're a small hardware store, that's general retail, when you get longer than, um, building materials stores, you could do a different number, um, could do a different thing, but that's why that's there.
Um, then do we, do we have a use classification for building?
Yeah, it's here, it's also under retail sales, it's just up.
Okay. So, centers in, in Mountain Ranch, maybe a small hardware store, and centers in Valley Springs would be a building, supply store.
And they may be regulated the exact kind of same way, they both may be permitted in the areas that they're located, um.
Centered Mountain Ranch is a thing of its own.
Yeah, that's, that's a hybrid.
So, to clarify, Martha, is the, I just want to check, the ten thousand square foot limitation is intended to be specific to hardware stores in that section? That's what I was.
Yep.
I just wanted to make sure that was in the actual.
Now, where is building supply?
On the flip side, one oh three.
Three.
Down at the bottom, retail sales.
Yeah.
Building materials stores.
Okay, great, everybody's covered.
Are you happy?
Oh, ecstatic.
So, hypothetically speaking, then, a place like, um, Home Depot would come under what definition?
Building, building material store.
It covers hardware sto- large hardware.
No, it's, building material store says less than ten thousand square feet.
It says that.
Should be greater than.
It's a general.
It says, um.
This subclassification does not include construction materials, yards, hardware stores less than ten thousand square feet, or plant nurseries.
I'm certainly glad you defined reverse vending machines. I wouldn't get close to one of those, without a definition. It's on one oh nine.
Everybody okay with all the industrial uses?
Yeah.
Oh, how cool. Do we have any of those?
Any what?
Vending machines?
Not that I know of, I've never heard of one before.
Take your money and don't give you anything back.
We have those. We have them here. Gina, in general, do we, are we just taking definitions from our existing code, or we, do we have new definitions in here? Um, maybe strikeouts or something that shows what, if we make any, you made any changes from our existing codes, which ones are those and, and, and what specifically are they? If it's not, then it's just, uh, this is just existing definition in our code.
Um, some of these are new, some of these are modified, some of them are carried forward. You know, as we know, our current code is, is, um, our definitions are rather challenging, um, and we've got multiple definitions for the same use or similar use, um, so, um, yeah, so, you know, a lot of these, um, are just carried forward in some ways, and then others, we actually had to craft a definition because, you know, we had uses that were enumerated that weren't defined at all.
Yeah, I would say your current system is.
It's broken.
It's absolutely broken. You have definitions of things you don't regulate, you don't have regulations of things you do regulate, you have multiple definitions for the same thing, although they're slightly different, so you try and find what's a nuances, were those intentional or not, and you have outdated definitions, you, I mean, any problem with definitions, you kind of have it in your, um, code, so, this is kind of a fresh, fresh look that is based in your current.
Right.
Thank you for shortening.
Yes, I, we, the things that were problematic, we mostly found simply because we were looking up the definition while we went through the other parts of it, so, there might be something in here we didn't even talk about that they've just fixed.
You're right.
But it looks pretty good, I think we should maybe all take one more look and make sure we feel like there's nothing missing.
So, do we wish to start on countywide regulations?
That was gonna be my next.
Oh, this afternoon? Or would we like? Would we like to look at it tomorrow? It's the only thing on our agenda tomorrow is the greenhouse gas item that's carried over, and this.
Right.
But we are gonna, I think, have people from the abd- coming, I think that's still.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, that's good.
So, if everybody would like to leave early today, and we could all get back to our offices and do something?
Martha, are you going to be available tomorrow?
No, shouldn't do Thursday.
No, she only does Wednesday.
Only does Wednesday.
Yeah, but if we're starting a new section, then, then we have a whole new introduction, right, Martha? Yeah.
Well, that's what I was thinking, is maybe we gotta do the introduction.
Maybe we'll take the introduction today, if you're prepared to do that. She's always prepared, she just has to make a couple faces and look around.
It's like a reverse vending machine.
Well, we're like, um, if the present, I know we drafted the presentation, I just don't know if we refine it to be the most up-to-date.
I haven't seen it in a while.
Uh, we will be doing greenhouse gases first tomorrow, so we won't know what time.
Right.
We'll be done with that.
Well, and I'm not so sure, Martha's Thursdays are kind of.
Yeah, I was just thinking.
So. Well, so what time tomorrow? Let's start with, let me see.
I think unfortunately, we won't know because we don't know how greenhouse gases.
You can choose as the chair to take the data items off.
I know, but I hate to put off people in the audience who are here specifically to speak to something.
Yeah, I don't think that's gonna work to take this first.
So, is there just some general overview information that you could do today, not your formal presentation, we can do that next Wednesday, but just maybe give us a little bit of an intro to this?
Yeah, and let's, next Wednesday, we're not on calendar for a study session, Julie's gonna be absent.
Oh.
So, are, we're not meeting again, if we don't meet tomorrow, we're not meeting again until Wednesday, November eighth, which actually would give our new commissioner time to review.
To watch all the previous plans.
To review the next section.
Oh, because.
I know.
You have to.
And then, hopefully by that time, then.
Just giving him some awkward.
Yeah, first. And then by that time, hopefully, you know, it'll be enough time where we can kind of nail down those research projects that you tasked us with, um, and then we can kind of come back to you with some resolution on those and maybe a, a cleaned-up version.
So, does that mean we only want to do greenhouse gas tomorrow?
Um, I'm probably, unless everyone else has a different opinion, that's what I'm suggesting.
I would be fine with that, I mean, for me, that would be great timing to gain back a little time.
Yes.
So.
We're, we're all gonna take a break tomorrow, we're just gonna.
Greenhouse.
Right, right, yeah. So.
Yeah, so, you just made everybody really happy.
When, in your introduction for countywide regulations, if you could draw the distinction between what we've been doing, standards for specific uses, and countywide regulations, I'd appreciate it.
Would you like an introduction to countywide today?
A brief, a brief one, if you have it, not your full presentation, but just something so while we're reading and preparing for.
Could I go through my slides? So, what we could do, uh, cause you are going to three, is that correct? Today at the plan?
No, doesn't look that way now.
No, we're not gonna, we are not gonna go through it on Thursday at all, and we don't have a meeting next.
No, I think she said going through till three.
There's no point.
We, we can, but we don't have to.
Okay, so what we can do is take a five or ten minute break, I can go through, just verify the slides are, uh, accurate, and then I can do the introductory presentation, and you'll still be done before three.
That sounds great. That sounds great.
How do you feel about that?
If you wish.
Would you rather just wait?
No, that's fine, um.
That sounds great. Perfect. So, let's be back at two o'clock.
Okay, so I'll give the introduction, get my PowerPoint going. Looks like you have the right, um, screen. So this is the introduction to the countywide regulations. Now I'm gonna start with the overall project overview, just to remind ourselves, um, for anybody joining in. And you have some new commissioners, so we'll start with that. And then I'll give that overall summary of what's in the countywide regulations. So again, we're updating the, um, comprehensive update of the zoning code, which is Title 17 of the municipal code. And always the objective to be as concise and user friendly as possible and implement the general plan. The general plan is really what gives the umbrella policies and marching orders for the zoning code. So we wanna, um, again, update the code so it implements the general plan, eliminates inconsistencies, clarifies terminology, we touched on that with the use classifications, and be user friendly, be transparent, predictable and consistent in its processes, respond to community concerns, promote the type of development that's been identified in the general plan, standardize and simplify in the review processes and overall being consistent with state and federal law. So we're in the, starting the study sessions on the second set of preliminary draft regulations. Um, after the countywide standards, we'll look at the administrative provisions, which is brought up a couple times. But from there, we'll be doing revisions to these preliminary drafts, packaging that together into a complete draft zoning code where we will look at it again uh, before going through the official adoption and hearing process. So it is an iterative process. We do want to hear as much as we can as early in the process and have those conversations so we can wrap that in, um, as we go along. But, um, no decisions are being made through these study sessions and there will be time to kind of look at things again. So the countywide regulations include general site development standards and other requirements that are applicable either in all zones in the county or in multiple zones throughout the county. Um, and so it includes, uh, general site regulations, your cannabis provisions, groundwater management, landscaping, non-conforming provisions, parking, post-disaster recovery and signs. While these are all considered countywide regulations, there are some that ha- we have no changes to your existing provisions, we're just carrying them forward, um, except for just consistency update. So, um, those are placeholders in there and we're not gonna go over them, but we do want to point them out as their placeholders, um, to keep the structure. So I'll go over kind of a high level of what's included in the, um, those other portions of the countywide. So the first, uh, chapter or section is the general site regulations. And these are site regulations that apply to land and development, again, within some or all zoning districts, regardless of the use. So with this, existing standards have generally been updated, revised, reorganized. But again, kind of as we've talked about throughout this process, the intent and the effect of the standards reflect current practice. Uh, so there is an, again, an intention to create a, a lot of change throughout the county. It's really to make these provisions easier to use and understand and reflective of current practice. So, uh, the general site regulations include provisions for detached accessory structures. And these are, they're accessory structures, so there must be a permitted main use on the lot before that detached accessory structure may be constructed. Um, and that main use may be agriculture, it may be a residence, but there has to be some main use in order to have an accessory use. And then other than that, the accessory structures just need to meet the development standards of the zoning district where they're located. And current requirements for proof of legal access and the construction standards are carried forward. There's a new section for demolition or alteration of structures 75 years or older. And this is specifically related to a general plan implementation measure, which requires the preparation of a study prior to the demolition or alteration of those older buildings. Um, if that study finds that there is a potential impact for a significant structure or site, then a conditional use permit is required in order to, um, kind of, uh, respond to the significance. There's density bonus provisions. These are, um, affordable housing density provisions, which are really just consistent with state law. There are allowances for encroachments and setbacks. And these are your existing allowances that allow things to encroach into required setbacks. And part of that we touched on with the mobile home parks and, and stuff going in there, but that's the type of thing. So what is allowed to encroach into a required setback? There's also new setback requirements for streams and wetlands, as well as for agricultural buffers. And these requirements relate to some, specifically to some general plan implementation measures. So those were incorporated. Uh, there's allowances for height exceptions, and these carry forward the current exceptions for, um, specific features such as, um, antennas, pilot, silo, safety devices and different support structures. So those are things that are allowed to, um, exceed the maximum height. Uh, lighting and illumination, this is a new section applicable to new development, um, and additions that involve new light fixtures. These also relate to some general plan policies that, uh, calls for, um, addressing, um, light pollution, spillage, glare. These provisions have been, um, drafted with taking, um, cues and information from dark, the dark sky model ordinance and really are intended to, um, control light pollution. Again, that's spillage and glare. That's a new section. Um, there's provisions for outdoor storage, which has some perimeter fencing requirements that are adapted from your current requirements for outdoor storage and salvage and rucking uses. That current right to farm ordinance is carried forward. Uh, provisions for the location of swimming pools and spas and related equipment is carried forward as well, as well as, um, limitations on the heights of certain things near intersections and driveways for, uh, visibility. The next big section is landscaping, and these are provisions for the type, um, and amount of required landscaping. There's water efficiency requirements, uh, pursuant to state law that are incorporated and that apply. It also establishes areas that are required to be landscaped, which for residential districts, that's all required front and street facing setbacks. And then in commercial districts, the area between the fronts and the building and the public right of way. And then any disturbed vegetation needs to be replaced by, uh, native or drought tolerant landscaping. For non-conforming uses, structures and parcels, um, these are provisions that address those used structures and lots that were legally established, um, but no longer comply with the requirements of the current code. And that's typically because of a change to the, to the code. So, um, anything that was, again, legally established may continue. Um, and they may be remained, be utilized, and provided there's no increase in the non-conformity of it. Um, new provisions have been added to allow additions to and enlargement of non-conforming residences in non-residential zones. And this is really intended to, um, facilitate continued occupancy of people in their homes. So you might be in an existing residence, it's in a non-residential area, um, but maybe your family expanded or you need to add a bathroom or something. Um, the new provisions allow you to do that. And again, it's intended to facilitate that continued occupancy of people in their homes and also in recognition of the ongoing housing shortage.
Can I ask a quick question on, on that, Martha? Has there been any change in state law to do with non-conforming uses that specifically allows for that kind of an expansion?
You know, I, at the top of my head, I don't know. I know there's some protections for, um, destruction or damage to non-conforming residences. Um, but I don't know specifically recent anything towards this.
Okay, thanks.
Um, parking is included in the countywide regulations and the parking requirements apply to all new buildings and land uses. They also apply to existing buildings in non-re- for non-residential existing buildings where the change or expansion of use increases the number of required spaces by 10% or more. And this is really intended to allow some changes and some, you know, maybe then you need to add a bathroom to comply with health code requirements or something. Um, that's a small change that, um, we're not gonna recalculate your parking requirements based on that. And then for residential, if it just, an existing residence, uh, additional parking, if there's any required, is only, um, again, required when a new dwelling unit is created. So say you're non-con, you know, for some reason you don't have enough parking already provided, you weren't required to, um, you do an addition, they're not requiring additional parking unless you're adding that unit. Um, the number of parking spaces were revised and they were alre- the number of required parking spaces were revised. And the intention of this was to, was then towards user friendliness. So refine to largely keep the number of required spaces, but to standardize the parking requirements. So whenever there's a similar use, and what we see with parking requirements in the past is that, you know, something might require one space for 200 square feet. And then another similar use might require one space for 250 square feet. And then something else is one space for 225 square feet. We just want to standardize that because it's, at the end of the day, it's all pretty similar. And in order to facilitate, you know, changes of uses, we know that, you know, different businesses and uses come and go. Um, the building doesn't always change or that, that site doesn't always change. So we try to standardize them as much as possible. Is the administration have wherever possible the base requirement based on square footage and not things that may change such as number of employees or things like that? Um, and then, again, apply consistent requirements for similar uses. There's also allowances for reductions or flexibility in parking, including, um, allowing for some spaces to be, be provided as motorcycle parking, allow some consideration of parking reductions for shared parking lots, um, other parking reductions based on discretionary review, just where the evidence and the review authority finds that, oh yeah, that number of parking, number of parking spaces isn't necessary. Um, and then also that off-site parking allowance, which is currently a, like a PX overlay district, is moved just into the standard. So rather, kind of reducing the layer of, um, kind of regulation or the, you know, to avoid the need for an overlay zone and a rezoning every time there's an off, uh, off-site parking allowance, just build that into the standards rather than requiring a whole additional overlay district. And then finally for parking, there's, um, requirements for the design of parking lots and parking areas. And those are largely carried forward for, um, dimensions, paving, striping, lighting, landscaping, maintenance. And there is an allowance for alternative designs to be considered through discretionary review of those. So incorporating some flexibility for that.
Martha, can I ask you questions, uh, just one question? So this would take us back to page 29 under 1707030B, non-conforming parking. And I want to bring this up because even though I, I like the concept of not deeming something to be, uh, non-conforming based on existing parking standards, what happens when we have a significant use in change? So let's say we go from a space, 1500 square foot space that is an office, and then somebody comes in and says, I want to put in a restaurant, and the parking standard for a restaurant is much higher than the parking requirements for, for that particular space itself. Uh, what would we do in that particular instance? Uh, okay.
So you would require additional parking if that, um, if the number of required parking spaces increases by 10% or more. So say the existing retail space required five parking spaces, but they want to put a restaurant in and that requires 10 parking spaces.
Right.
You would. But the use itself is not considered non-conforming.
Okay, so, and what if they can't? The site is tight, because, uh, I'm bringing this up because we have a site. Uh, Gina, do you remember that one we were kind of struggling with? Uh, that has a, I don't know where it was, uh, it was in Valley Springs or, or Murphy's or something, that, uh, they couldn't really make the parking work regardless of what they did because just the site restrictions alone, and they cannot provide parking offsite. Remember that one?
Yeah, they, they actually have no parking.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, so in that is instance will be, we would have to say, no, you can't use this building for that purpose because you have limitations on your parking.
Or you can reduce the number of seats in your restaurant.
Right.
Yeah, if the restaurant space is basically based on footprints rather than number of seats.
They could easily change that by reducing the seating area.
But if the, i- if the increased need for parking is, what's the threshold, 5%?
10%.
10% or less, then we don't need to require additional parking.
Right, this is.
And in this case, um, they changed, they modified the use from a hotel, uh, transient occupancy use to a single-family residence. And the single-family residence only required two spaces. So I, I think it would have, it would have fit into that 10% in this case.
Went from a hotel to a single-family residence?
No, it was a conversion of a second story.
Oh.
Um, there was a restaurant down below. It was a conversion of the second story of the building. Um, historically, it had been a hotel or something years and years and years and years ago. Um, they wanted to re- remodel it and rebuild it and reopen it as a hotel, but they don't literally, they have no parking on site. They had two parking spaces in the, in the very back of the building on the parcel, and that was it. And so, um, so we, we worked something out. But I, I think in this case, it would, we wouldn't have required additional parking because the two spaces would have fell below the, the overall 10%.
Think, so say, for instance, they were required to provide additional parking and they didn't want to change what use they wanted to do. Then they could have applied for a conditional use permit for a parking reduction. So if you see this bullet here, and that's where they could say, hey, county, you know, we really want to do this hotel. It's in this great historic area, there is no parking, but here's how we're addressing that. Here's, you know, you can go through that discretionary process and the county could say yes or no or yes, provide a type of thing. So that's where this, um, these provisions for reductions and flexibility are built in so that you, because you do, you have like these really, um, you have existing development that's, you know, part of the character of your area. And you, and in some cases, you may not want them actually to provide a big parking lot in the middle of your, you know, nice town that would have to take out some buildings. So this gives you that opportunity to consider those. The final section is, uh, signs and generally carrying forward existing provisions for exempt signs, prohibited signs, temporary community identification, non-conforming, um, billboards, the review processes. Um, some notable changes include just. Um, some notable changes include just a statement regarding message neutrality, um, and allowance for message substitution. This is really consistent with, um, free speech in, um, United States and California constitutions. There's also provisions for comprehensive sign program, which, uh, would be reviewed and approved by the planning commission. And then there's, um, new controls on electronic signs.
And Martha was so kind is to add, um, uh, some figures.
Yes.
Showing us how to measure signage, which is really helpful.
That's wonderful.
In addition, so when you guys get to that.
So.
Much improved.
But I think that we should, the vertical dimension should be height, not length.
Yeah.
Just to conform with. Yeah, common practice. That's a minor thing.
Yeah, and, and we'll, we'll take those comments, but also just a, a note on those figures and figures in general. Those were, um, kind of dropped on in, I would say, quick and dirty. We will be doing graphics and adding more in. It's just, we do those once the, uh, regulations are a little more set. Otherwise, we're illustrating things that then get revised and all that. So, um, all graphics that you see will be revised and refined, and then there will be additional ones. So just wanted to highlight that.
We'll hang on to our. The next meeting.
That's for another day.
When length can be one eighth of the width, I.
Yep. Okay, so that ought to get us started.
That's great.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Do, do any of our commissioners have a report?
I certainly like to welcome our new commissioner.
The only report I have is that, I'm gonna have to do a quick study.
I, no problem. We have confidence.
Enjoyed this today. This was actually. You're right. You guys were saying that this.
See?
It's interesting.
I'm glad, I'm glad that you're feeling well enough to join us today.
Yeah.
No, not yet.
That you have an opinion about.
Yeah.
And planning director reports?
Uh, just to welcome our new planning commissioner and to let him know that I have some information for him regarding GHG, which is another, uh, issue that you would have to get a quick study on. So I, I don't know if you have a few minutes after we can, uh, meet in my office and we can talk about GHG. Very good. Welcome.
Good, now tomorrow we are just doing GHG. We have something on the agenda that's gonna be continued.
Yes.
And then that's GHG.
So.
Yeah.
So then we need to continue this study session to a date specific, which will be Wednesday, November 8th.
Right. So is there a motion?
I shall move.
Wednesday, November 8th?
Yes.
We're not doing it.
I will second.
We're not doing it.
Thank you. Yes. All, all in favor? Who is the second?
Don Porter.
I'm sorry?
Don Porter.
Thank you, Don.
I showed up in that.
November 8th. Okay, on that happy note, we are adjourned.